Mayor Ritter, are you with us? Hello, Mayor. We can hear you.
Stop? Okay.
All right. Now, we've got all the members of the council present. We're going to go ahead and ask the city attorney to bring us out of closed session.
The council took no reportable action in closed session today.
Thank you very much. And now, we're going to have the Pledge of Legions led by Council Member Contreras.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. Members of the public are reminded that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting, conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is appropriate for those items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. To speak on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on and give it to the clerk, secretary, staff. Speaker slips are available on the table just outside the city council chambers. Speakers will have three minutes to address the city council. And for the approval of our agenda, go to our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, we'll go to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk or secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. We have 12 consent items this evening. Do we have any members of the public? Okay, Councilman Green.
I would move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
I will second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll or cast your votes electronically.
Actually, I apologize, but we will not be able to display the vote, so we'll do a hand vote if we can, or a verbal vote. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, how do you vote?
He's on mute.
You're on mute.
How do you vote, Mayor?
All right, we'll go with 4-0, with the mayor unable to vote.
Okay, we can let the record reflect her vote if she's able to join the meeting and rejoin us. Okay. Next is public hearing number one. There are two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is to receive public testimony regarding membership in the Clean Energy Alliance, a community choice energy program. The public hearing is now open. Community Development Director John Connolly will introduce the item.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council. Caitlin Elliott-Norgrove, who's our Climate Action Plan Program Manager, will be making the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are before you this evening to discuss membership in the Clean Energy Alliance, or CEA. We seek council's direction to join a community choice energy program, specifically CEA. By adopting the Climate Action Plan update in October 2021, the city established several climate action measures needed to meet the greenhouse gas, or GHG, reduction targets in the plan. A primary climate action measure is the commitment to join a community choice energy, or CCE, program by 2030.
Madam Mayor, you want to use your mute button?
I'll see working on it. They unmuted me.
Membership in a CCE will help realize a reduction in GHG of 28,338 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. CCE programs offer an alternative electric power option to residents and businesses currently served by investor-owned utilities such as San Diego Gas and Electric. The CEA model, or CCE model, excuse me, is essential as SDGNE prepares to exit as an electric power provider. Under a CCE model, local governments purchase and manage their community's electric power supply by sourcing power from a preferred mix of traditional and renewable power generation sources, while the investor-owned utility continues to provide distribution. In April 2019, council directed staff to prepare an RFP for CCA feasibility study. The RFP was released in June 2019, and the feasibility study was initiated in partnership with the cities of San Marcos and Escondido. At the October 12, 2021 council meeting, staff presented the findings of the technical feasibility study and discussed options for joining a CCE program. Following a discussion of policy issues related to the two existing CCE programs in the region, San Diego Community Power and CEA, council directed staff to further evaluate joining CEA. Oh, excuse me. In May 2022, council reviewed information provided by and discussed membership in CEA and directed staff to pursue membership. CEA was formed in 2019 through a Joint Powers Authority, or JPA, that includes the cities of Carlsbad, Del Mar, and Solana Beach, and began service in 2021. Both Escondido and San Marcos became CEA members in 2021 and are scheduled to begin service in 2023. Oceanside will become a member this fall, with service beginning in 2024, and San Clemente will consider CEA membership in July. Currently, there is a 93% customer participation rate across existing CEA member cities. All customers are auto-enrolled and have the option to opt out. Customers may choose from one of three power products: Clean Impact, which offers 50% renewable; Clean Impact Plus, which offers 75% carbon-free energy; and Green Impact, which offers 100% renewable. The cities of Carlsbad, Del Mar, and Solana Beach all established the 75% carbon-free Clean Impact Plus as their default rate. The city will need to choose the default product for its customers by December 2023 for a 2024 service launch. There is no need for action at this time. At the May 3, 2022 council workshop, staff shared the results of the city's energy load assessment. CEA analyzed Vista's energy load data and provided a summary of anticipated costs, implications for ratepayers, and steps involved in the process. Exit fees, also referred to as the power charge indifference adjustment, are set by the Public Utilities Commission, or PUC, annually and account for the costs that SDGNE can recover for the purchase of long-term power contracts for a service area that is converting to a CCE. Exit fees are a significant consideration in estimating future costs for Vista customers. However, these fees are unknown at this time, as they are not set until close to the launch date, which would be in late 2023 for Vista's anticipated 2024 launch. Current customers in existing CEA member cities are realizing a 2% discount relative to SDGNE bundled service based on exit fees and rates applicable to each jurisdiction. CEA staff estimates the discount for Vista customers would be comparable, but it is dependent upon several factors such as exit fees. In May 2022, CEA prepared an updated financial assessment for Vista, Oceanside, and San Clemente. This assessment anticipates that CEA will experience a decrease in projected revenue over the next four years and may fall short on its reserve contributions due to turbulence in the energy market, which is attributed to increased energy contract costs and the conflict in Eastern Europe. CEA's current policy requires a minimum reserve of 5% each year. In order to meet the minimum reserve contribution of 5%, CEA foresees a system-wide rate increase of 2.5% to cover future generation costs. The anticipated generation increase of 2.5% will still realize for Vista customers an estimated cost savings averaging 2% over SDGNE rates. As the city pursues membership in CEA, two concerns regarding energy procurement are important to note: resource adequacy and long-term renewable energy. The PUC adopted a resource adequacy framework in 2004 to ensure the reliability of electric service in California and the safe operation of the grid. CEA works closely with SDGNE to acquire excess energy contracts for resource adequacy related to the departures of new members from SDGNE to CEA. CEA is vulnerable to noncompliance with its resource adequacy requirements if it fails to reach an agreement with SDGNE. The PUC requires SDGNE to make available to CEA excess renewable energy. Long-term renewable energy contracts are required for existing generational facilities immediately upon the establishment of service. The current long-term renewable energy compliance period ends in December 2024, so if Vista customers launch in April 2024, it leaves only an eight-month period for negotiations with SDGNE to meet long-term contracting requirements. If an agreement is not reached prior to the 2024 customer launches, CEA risks noncompliance, which could result in the phasing of new customer launches in 2024 through 2025. If council votes to join CEA this evening, the city will have a representative seated on the CEA Board of Directors for all discussions and considerations regarding procurement concerns prior to service launch. A Board of Directors governs CEA with one representative from each member agency. Each representative's vote carries equal weight, and there is no allowance for a weighted vote within the bylaws. Each member agency of CEA also appoints an alternate representative to serve when the primary is unavailable. Upon city council authorization to join CEA, a representative, an alternate representative, will be seated to partial terms beginning in August 2022. No additional staff resources are required for membership. The total anticipated cost for Vista to join CEA will not exceed $50,000. These funds would cover the costs incurred by CEA to update its implementation plan with the PUC. Vista would share the cost of updating the implementation plan with Oceanside and potentially San Clemente. CEA is committed to reimbursing member agencies' startup costs after three years of membership. Next steps are dependent upon council's decision this evening. Should council vote to join CEA, the following will occur. At a meeting on July 28, CEA will approve Vista's membership. In August, the city's board members will be seated. In November, CEA will approve the Implementation Plan Amendment, which includes new member cities. In December, the Implementation Plan Amendment will be filed with the PUC. In March 2023, the Implementation Plan Amendment will be approved by the PUC. And in April 2024, or sometime in 2025, the launch of CEA service to Vista customers is anticipated. This launch date of Vista service is contingent upon CEA procurement actions as detailed previously. As an incoming member, the city must adopt a resolution to execute CEA's Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement and certify the mayor's appointment of a member and alternate member to the CEA Board of Directors. Additionally, under PUC Code 366.2C12, the city must adopt an ordinance stating the intent to implement a community choice aggregation program. This ordinance shall be effective on the 31st day following its date of adoption. Staff recommends closing the public hearing and taking action on the resolution and ordinance. This concludes our presentation. Barbara Boswell, Chief Executive Officer of CEA, and staff are available if there are any questions.
Thank you very much. And we do have three members of the public that would like to be heard. So, we'll begin with public comment on item PH1 with Barbara Boswell, followed by Joe Houd.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, Deputy Mayor Franklin, and members of the city council. It's my pleasure to be here before you again and express Clean Energy Alliance's support of the city of Vista joining Clean Energy Alliance in bringing choice in power supply to the residents and businesses of Vista. As mentioned, the presentation, CEA offers three power supply products at rates competitive with SDGNE. Customers would have a choice of selecting one of those products, and will also have the choice to opt out if they decide that being a member or a customer of Clean Energy Alliance is not their priority. The current analysis of costs shows that CEA can serve customers at rates that provide a savings compared to SDGNE. Being a member of CEA will support Vista in meeting its Climate Action Plan goals, and CEA would be a partner in supporting the goals of Vista in meeting its Climate Action Plan goals. Joining now is good timing, as Vista will have a voice in setting policies, programs, and goals in this new entity. The CEA Board has taken a very conservative approach with regards to its administrative and overhead costs, keeping costs low and setting the priority of building reserves. In the coming fiscal year, the Board is considering hiring its initial in-house staff. The CEA has a Community Advisory Committee, which consists of two committee members from each member city, and Vista will have the opportunity to select their two members. to select their two members once they become members. The Community Advisory Committee provides input to the Board on various topics, including programs, service to underserved communities, electric vehicles, and rates and priorities. Discussions with San Diego Gas Electric have already begun with regards to our expansions and the needs that we would have in terms of procurement, and we have another meeting with them tomorrow. CEA has established a very good working relationship with SDGNE, and we anticipate that by working closely and working early that we will be able to meet the needs that we have and address the concerns with regards to resource adequacy and the renewable energy products. I'm happy to answer whatever questions the council may have. Thank you.
Okay, next is Joe Howden, followed by Sonia Robinson.
Good evening, council members. My name is Joe Hood. I live in Vista. I'm incredibly concerned about our climate crisis. I think we're collectively not doing enough. I absolutely agree or urge the city to join CEA. This makes great sense. It's long overdue. I urge you to pick the Green Impact 100% renewable as the default. Let's not play games and take half-measures. I assume the council will have a representative, as we've heard on the CEA Board. I don't know the exact selection process, but I want to highly recommend either or both of Karina Contreras, council member, and council member Melendez. Why do I make such a recommendation? I urge that Vista urge our members to ask CEA to emphasize energy justice. This is local energy, community energy, microgrids, different names for the same thing. All serve, or potentially serve, lower-wealth neighborhoods. And I think these two council members would be superb at representing their interests. These technologies reduce the energy burden of members of the community. They improve resilience. Done well, can even increase wealth and well-being of the members of the community. Just as an FYI, Peninsula Clean Energy in the Bay Area today, or this last week, released an RFP for 15.15 microgrids. This is doable. We can transform more than just the simple concept of saving 2%. There's more risk here than 2% or more on the table, at least, I would say, than 2%. So thank you for your time and your listening, and let's go together, move forward, and tackle this climate problem we have.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Sonia Robinson.
Good evening to the mayor, deputy mayor, council member Contreras, and to the rest of the diocese. I'm Sonia Robinson. I'm here in a capacity as the program manager and lead organizer with a nonprofit called the Protect Our Communities Foundation, as well as Sun Sustainable Urban Network. And I also chaired the very first Environmental and Climate Justice Committee with the NAACP North County, as well as in the city of San Diego. So I'm here to discuss in favor of the city of Vista to join the Clean Energy Alliance. Energy justice is a main focus for me, and to be really frank, affordability really matters to many people that live in the county of San Diego. And just to kind of make my point, the city of San Diego, which we're in the county, is the least affordable place to live in the country. Not the most expensive, but least affordable. There's different metrics for affordability. And so when your cost of living outgrows the pace of your income, it becomes unaffordable. And so I definitely believe that, and I'm very happy to see that the city of San Diego is taking every measure to keep our electricity rates down. Why? Because SDGNE has the highest rates in the country. Their rates are higher than Hawaii. So because when you look at our affordability issue, when you look at the high cost of our rates, anything we can do to relieve the energy burden on so many that are in the city of Vista, it matters to many community members. It matters to Black and Brown communities, low, moderate-income families. So any savings would make a big difference, and I would strongly encourage the city of Vista with the Clean Energy Alliance to focus on local aggregated rooftop solar-generated energy. Why? Because when you do local aggregated rooftop solar, it mitigates the need for unnecessary transmission and distribution capital projects that we, as ratepayers, have to pay. And those costs go straight to the shareholders of SDGNE versus being regenerated within a Clean Energy Alliance. Any profits they have as a nonprofit, it's regenerative income that can be reinvested in our community. In addition to that, I would also like to submit a strong recommendation for council member Karina Contreras to be considered as a board member on Clean Energy Alliance to represent the city of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Contreras.
I want to thank the public for coming and speaking. This has been a long process. I want to thank staff for continuously looking into this process. And I do want to just, before I get into saying anything, just say that I am sad and disappointed that we still have not joined because we could have joined last year. We could have made that commitment, and we could have had our residents in Vista, our businesses in Vista, having an energy savings much sooner than the timetables that we're seeing of 2024, 2025. So I am disappointed that we're already behind the curve. I do really appreciate those who would want to see me lead the city of Vista on Clean Energy Alliance. I do want to say that unfortunately, it's not something I'm able to do due to a newer position that I have accepted and have started working with Climate Action Campaign to really spur other cities to do the best that they can when it comes to climate justice. And unfortunately, I don't like to tread in any gray waters of conflict of interest. So I do want to say for the public record, as much as I would want to be the champion of it, one, the way that the recommendation is laid out is that the mayor will make the nomination. I actually believe that we should have a discussion as a council, and I would recommend council member Melendez be the one who champions us at Clean Energy Alliance. And there's many reasons why, but one of them has to do with the fact that we, in the city of Vista, have a lot of deep structural poverty and different issues that have persisted and gotten worse through the pandemic. Every single crisis that we have, you know, I know a lot of folks that never recovered from the 2008 recession. And when we're talking about energy, we have to be really conscious of the social determinants of health, where energy and health intersect. And there's so much to say about that topic alone, which is why I would urge my council to not delay this decision any longer. We absolutely need to meet the crisis where it's at. We need to take realistic action. We need to be bold. We need to understand that we are facing so many different issues, and the possibility of being in economic turmoil makes it even more urgent that we bring cost savings to those who have to use energy, which is all of us, right? We all need cost savings. So, you know, it's already too late. We're already behind. So I really urge my colleagues on council to move forward expeditiously in adopting 100% renewable energy at minimum for the municipality. Because I'm curious to see, too, what that impact would be, the positive impact it would have on our Climate Action Plan goals as well. That's an analysis that I haven't seen yet, but I know that it would only bring more us closer to achieving our Climate Action Plan. So I do have a few questions. One of my questions has to do with what has been stated as about 2% energy savings. Does that change differing on what we select as the level of renewable energy?
So the 2% savings reflects the CEA generation costs, and based on the power product tier, the percentage of savings will change. And that also factors in changes in exit fees and other costs.
So there's a potential for the 2% to either increase or decrease dependent on these variables, some of which are unknown?
That is correct. So we'll have the clearest understanding of what the final cost to consumers will be in December 2023 once we get those exit fees from SDGNE.
I know that we've had several discussions, and there hasn't, in multiple discussions, we haven't had consensus on starting at 100% renewable energy. So I, you know, I would hope that at minimum we could be a good corporate citizen and take the initiative and take the responsibility that we actually have to our residents and to the rest of the world. Honestly, we all have to take these steps, and we cannot delay them. But we absolutely, at the city of Vista, for our municipal needs with energy, we need to be at 100% renewable energy. You know, we have a population where the average income is 65,000. It's much lower than other cities. And we have a population that a lot of individuals either live on a fixed income. Our rents have increased dramatically. We have led the county with a 23% increase in rents. All these things come, they factor into the ability for people to have good community well-being. And it also factors into potentially less sales tax in the future. If we can increase individuals' buying power by reducing the cost of necessary daily resources, and we have the ability to do that, we absolutely need to act on that. But we need to have 100% renewable energy at the city because we do have a population that is disproportionately impacted by the dire circumstances of the climate crisis. So another reason that we absolutely need to move forward with joining Clean Energy Alliance is the fact that we do have a unique window of opportunity that even though we wouldn't be able to launch a CEA for people to have those cost savings until about 2024, 25, as was stated, we do have the important window of opportunity to be seated at the table during these discussions. And that is incredibly important. I don't want to lose that window of opportunity. So, yeah, that's another reason why we need to join. However, I do want to say that when it comes to the reserves of CEA, you know, 5%, I know that's the minimum, but we definitely need to work on increasing those reserves because of the possibility of economic turmoil. And the more that we can have local energy production, the more that we can ensure that we have a little bit more control over the cost of energy. So I'd love to hear about microgrids. You know, there's so many technologies that are coming to fruition just in time for us to really take advantage of the power of new technology to lower energy costs and increase energy production in a local way because we always want to move towards resilience. We don't want to have to go through a crisis where we lose power. You know, I don't know how many of you were here, you know, some time ago. We lost energy completely, and it was pretty insane, you know? So we really are dependent on things just working, right? So I want to ensure that when we're at Clean Energy Alliance that we are being financially sustainable and resilient. But I just, I really just implore my colleagues to have the city be a good corporate citizen and commit to 100% renewable energy because it's going to help our residents in so many different ways. I have one last question, and that has to do with the cost sharing with Oceanside and San Clemente. If we were to not move forward with joining CEA today, would we still have the ability to share those costs? Or would that opportunity leave us?
My understanding, and Barb may correct this, but we would split the costs with whichever city is choosing to join at the same time.
And which other cities are left to join? Do we have some new ones that are going to be incorporating soon that I don't know about?
I think the city of Laguna Beach had considered membership, but their situation is slightly more complex as the city is split between Southern California Edison and San Diego Gas and Electric.
Okay. So yet another reason for us to really see this as an urgent need to join as soon as possible, which would be today. Because, you know, not only do we need to have energy savings as soon as possible, not only do we need to commit to 100% renewable energy as soon as possible, but we also need to decrease our financial burden if we're going to have this decision anyways. So it makes no sense to kick this down the road and say, okay, well, we're not sure that we want to join because of X and Y reason, so we need to wait. That, to me, just, it would be financially irresponsible. We need to be able to save every single penny that we can in this process. It's our fiduciary responsibility to the residents of Vista. I've already pretty much spoken for, who knows? Maybe it's an hour at this point. I haven't been keeping time, but I really appreciate the conversation, and I look forward to hearing more information and discussion from my colleagues. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. Quick question for you. When is the meeting in August for the CEA? What's the date of that meeting? Is it after our first council meeting in August, I'm assuming?
We can check on that and-
Okay. Because what I was thinking is if the meeting is before the second Tuesday in August, then, you know, we are going to be, the mayor's going to be appointing that position at the, you know, second Tuesday of August for the August adoption of our board members. So Barb? 25th?
25th.
Look at that. Lip reader over here. Perfect. Look at that, lip reader over here, perfect. So we will have time at the next meeting to discuss the appointment of that board member. I was also leaning towards Councilmember Contreras, but I knew she had another obligation as well. So between now and then, I'd like to get the information for our whole council of what the time commitment is for that board, what we'd be discussing and you know, what type of policies we'd be bringing forward and type of responsibilities. Because I love being on the RISL Board talking about the, you know, SB 1383, you know, organic recycling and things. And I'd be into Clean Energy Alliance depending on what the time commitment is, because I also own a business and have a lot of other work too. But I just want to kind of know what that is and when that comes forward. But I think any members on our council, especially Councilmember Melendez, would be great with that position as well.
Councilmember Green, I may, the resolution as it's prepared-
Just as the mayor appoints.
Yeah, the mayor appoints. So if you did want to change that and have the council appoint it, that would need to be a modification to the resolution.
Okay. I would assume, and Madam Mayor is here, that she's going to discuss with us whether we would accept her appointment or not. Is she allowed to answer that question?
That is correct and she can answer first.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure. I mean, I don't need to add it as another item. I'm fine with you appointing. I just want to make sure, like you can't obviously appoint Karina because she can't show up to it, so.
Right. So you're wanting to know who I would appoint?
No, no, not right now. I just want to make sure that you're going to discuss it with us as a council prior to making the appointment.
I can discuss it today. I would, I would put you on and Katie, Councilmember Melendez, as alternate.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'd like to, that sounds okay, but again, I'd like to know the time commitment and things prior to accepting the appointment, but I don't mind at all and I, if I can't show up, I'm sure Katie would be great. So thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that and obviously that information is going to be very, very important, shall I be that member, which I very well be. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. So the other thing that I wanted to make sure of is we're not determining which default energy level that we're offering for our citizens today, right? Nor are we determining which default energy level our municipality is selecting.
That is correct. That determination will be made in December 2023.
Okay. And for the record, I also agree, our municipality should agree to 100% clean energy to kind of set the example. However, I also have the understanding of cost savings that our residents discussed today where starting and giving the option of our residents at 50%, which is the largest monthly savings, should be their option. And the Consumer Choice Energy Plan, in my opinion, is an elected official, is giving the consumer that choice. So they can see that, hey, ideally, we'd love you to be at 100%, but the truth is, if it comes between, hey, that extra, you know, 20 bucks is feeding your family or giving you clean energy as a father of four, I'm saving the money and feeding my kids. So I do want to make sure, as we discuss it, we'll talk a little bit more, but I understand that and the truth is the 75% actually is right in line. I mean, it's within, it actually looks like it saves a little bit, you know, in the sense of the 50% energy savings. So we'll talk about it when we get there. Another question that I had is, you said that the PUC, Public Utility Commission, and maybe you didn't use that acronym, but I'm down with the acronyms these days. You told me that they, they release their vintage pricing at the end of every year, correct?
Correct.
I put that on a tee for you. Rhetorical questions are my favorite thing. So this is my question for you, all right? You gave me a table here and I read the disclaimer at the bottom, so I don't think you caught me. I know that the average kilowatt used to calculate to the delivery fees on this was incorrect and it's correct on table five. Fantastic. My question to you is, you ready for it? I see you wanting to give it to me. Why are my vintage charges, which are my exit fees in April 22, $11.90 and my vintage charges in May as of today are only $10.26? Because it looks to me like I saved $1.70 per whatever in exit fees over a month and I thought those fees didn't change. So just why is it different?
Invite Barb Oswald too.
Hi Barb. If these are going to keep getting cheaper, I want to say, you know, I want to hold out a little longer. So my next follow-up question that you can answer is what's the trend of these fees? Because since it looks like it was cheaper from a month to month, like-
The exit fees are based on, are charged every month based on how much energy a customer uses. So when we use a different average per month kilowatt hours than the-
So the exit fees, okay.
So they're not, that's not a flat every month to every customer. It depends on what the customer uses, depends on the usage.
So that delivery fee will then change every month too? It's all based off a percentage?
Yeah.
Okay. So everything's based off of a percentage and that percentage is what changes every year?
Correct.
So it's the same math problem, it was just based off of a different kilowatt?
Correct.
All right. And next question for you, now that I know that, has that percentage trended up as far as the vintage exit fees from the PUC or are they magically trending that fee down with inflation?
So they, the exit fee trends the opposite direction of what the power costs are.
Okay.
So right now, electricity costs are going up, so the exit fees are going down. And actually for the older vintages for next year, SDG&E just submitted their rate, initial rate proposal for next year and the exit fees are, in that are negative.
Wow.
So, but think about how expensive right now gas is and electricity is. And so it's an inverse relationship.
As those costs fluctuate, those charges fluctuate. But that's the benefit of having the CEA is we get the benefit of those savings as they fluctuate. We're not just kind of set like we are now with SDG&E. Is that more because of the local control? I mean-
So the exit fee is a fee that's charged by SDG&E. While they're low and projected to be lower, historically, we've seen them rise because electricity costs were going down. So they do roller coaster, but they will over time diminish as the portfolio of contracts that the customers are paying for expire and roll off. So over time, the portfolio gets smaller and the exit fee will diminish and go away, but it is subject to being higher one year, lower another year, just depending on the market.
But historically, it's, it looks like historically, even when we looked at this in April, we were outperforming SDG based off the energy costs that you were calculating there. These energy costs, which are obviously lower off the new, you know, kilowatt calculations, I mean, we're saving, this looks better than when we looked at it a month ago is what I'm getting at. And the fact, and kind of what I want to show is as a consumer, this is reality. Like very rarely with a electricity company are you going to be like, hey, just so you know, in May, it's cheaper because of the fees. Like I, I like the transparency and I think a lot of what consumers want is transparency with our power companies, because we're all paying a whole heck of a lot of money for our power bills. I think Councilwoman Contreras likes to pull it on the Treasury report, so you know what we're paying here and it's an outrageous amount of money. And you know, with the solar, I love the rooftop solar aggregate that you spoke about. I'd like to dig into that more, but I definitely think step one is getting in the CEA and getting, getting this taken care of for our city. So I appreciate all the information. The other question that I had about the PUC releasing their pricing, obviously, I know that's not right, that, when that is, the board member, board meeting, 100%? Nah, man, all questions answered. So for me, I love the presentation. I like the CEA. I'm sold. Took me a little while to be sold. I know it did, but I'm a numbers guy. It always breaks down to it's not magic, it's math. And I feel like the math of the CEA, number one, works out for our community, saves them a lot of money and we also know that this is what's best for our environment. So with that said, I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the city council resolutions as listed in the agenda report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Melendez.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for the public comments and for the presentation. I have, you know, a lot of similar sentiments as my colleagues, but I do have one question. I understand that this whole opportunity is dependent upon CEA power procurement actions. And I just want to ask the question, you know, what happens if there is a challenge with procuring power? And you know, would it be so difficult for us to go back to our current or standard energy aggregation with SDG&E if something does happen and CEA is not able to provide that power that we were anticipating them to provide? I anticipate that we're going to only have more renewable sources, right? That's my anticipation, but right, we can't always anticipate the future. So you know, what does that look like for us to, you know, have to take a step back?
Thanks for the question. And the two power supply products that were mentioned as part of the presentation, resource adequacy and the renewable energy are just two pieces of our overall procurement pie. There's no concerns with regards to having the sufficient resources to procure the energy to provide the energy. These are ancillary products that we're required to provide. If we are, for example, if the PUC establishes the quantity of resource adequacy we need to provide, we need to procure. If we're unable to meet that, then there are penalties and there's a process with regards to that. So customers still have power, we're still able to serve them. It's, you know, administrative penalty function and a waiver process and there's a process we go through to deal with the PUC. Same with the renewable energy requirements. We have mandates from the PUC to, with regards to minimums of long-term renewable energy. And if we don't meet those, then there's a penalty, but it doesn't mean we can't service customers. It means now we're, we're having to deal with the repercussions of not meeting a compliance requirement.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much for giving us that reassurance. I asked the question because I know that a lot of folks, you know, might feel more comfortable with what they're familiar with. But again, I feel really confident in the city of Vista joining CEA and being able to bring these renewable energy sources to the community. I also agree that the city of Vista as a municipality should lead that effort and go forward with 100% renewable. And even, you know, looking at some of, you know, the comments that we've had, I agree, I would love to have a discussion about microgrids, about, you know, future energy resilience, right? Especially because there is an interim, right? We're choosing today hopefully to join CEA, but there is a lapse of time where we're not going to be necessarily benefiting from that partnership until our timeframe is fulfilled. So in the meantime, you know, I hope at a future discussion, we could talk about some of those opportunities to produce more renewable energy in our own community. And lastly, I would be so happy to serve as a representative from the city of Vista, whether that be, right, as a primary or as an alternate as well. I always want to make sure that Vista is advocated for and a lot of times during regional discussions, we get left out. So we always want to have good representation there. I don't have any other questions, but I really do appreciate, you know, us being able to have this public hearing and I absolutely support Vista in joining CEA. Thanks.
Okay, we do have two more members of the public that would like to be heard during our public hearing. So I'm going to call on Suzanne Hume to speak, followed by John Bodorf.
Hi, and thank you. My name is Suzanne Hume. I'm the educational director and founder of CleanEarthForKids.org. I'd like to say thank you because this is really important. Our kids need clean air to breathe, as we've talked about before. You know, San Diego County has an F in ozone and an F in particulate matter. So we have no choice because clean air is essential for healthy children. We know that pre-birth, stillbirth, low birth weight, birth defects, learning problems, cancers, et cetera, are directly related to air pollution. So you can check out Clean Earth For Kids Team 3 and our wonderful consultants from everywhere and scientists, including Dr. Bruce Bakar, so OB-GYN. I just would like to say thank you and I hope we can go forward with CEA and just, it's a bright day in Vista. Thank you.
This is John Bodorf with CleanEarthForKids.org. I just wanted to say thank you again for bringing this forward and we look forward to you guys voting yes on the Clean Energy Alliance and strongly encourage you guys to go 100% renewable to get us off of fossil fuels as quickly as possible. Thank you.
I just wanted to check in with Mayor Ritter, ask if you wanted to be heard at this time?
Sure. I, I support, I, do we have a second on the motion?
Not yet.
Okay, I would second the motion and, and I, in joining, I would like to have a discussion probably at a later date about the, you know, the 100% renewables and the, or the percentage because I, and the exit fee. I think, you know, but I think that comes at a later date. So I'm, I'm happy to join right now and, you know, and I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And I would just add that I believe that joining the Consumer Choice Energy Program, CEA, provides choice for Vista's ratepayers. And that is ultimately, the greatest thing we can do is provide our residents with a choice, not only between different rates for different products, but also allow our customers to choose up to 100% renewable energy. Ultimately, we want to ensure that we're always offering as an option, the lowest possible rate for Vista's working families. As was pointed out by, I think, Councilwoman Contreras, the number is 24.7%. Our average income in Vista is 25% less than the county as a whole. So I want to thank Ms. Robinson from the NAACP, who said that affordability is key to low-income families. Any savings would make a difference. I agree with that. We want to give consumers the option to spend the money that they earn in the way that they choose, particularly if they choose to spend it on 100%. That we want to give them that choice. And, and I look forward to the discussion when we have all of the information in front of us in late 2023 and we can choose between the different products. Do we have additional speakers here? Okay, we have two additional members of the public that wanted to be heard. We'll go ahead and take Youssef Miller, followed by Naim Miller.
My name is Youssef Miller. I'm with the North County NAACP Environmental Justice Chair and with Clean Earth For Kids. Not yet. That's my son. I'm just trying to help him get, get settled. So yeah, CEA, we want to make sure that everybody is, this is the right choice, the clean choice, and this is an equity choice when we're talking about CEA. We're talking about communities of concern, communities of color, who are overburdened with energy costs. Overburdened with energy costs because we are in heat indexes, we're in communities that people have to run their energy a lot just to get fresh air. When we have out in the community where people are suffering from asthma, people are suffering from allergens and in communities of color, it's more intense with particulate matter coming from trucks and coming from highways and coming from areas which have, have no greenery to soak that up, no man-made lakes or natural lakes or natural waterways to absorb and soak that up, not only for our youth, but also for our elderly. Our elderly also suffers from this. So what is their options? Some of them can't make it to the beach and then we have some areas where they're not even close to the beach. But for those who can't make it to the beach, maybe they're elderly, maybe they're too young, they have to rely on dirty energy. They have to rely on SDG&E energy. They have to rely on these things and they sting in the house and they use that and it's most expensive. We're like the highest rate in, not only in the state, in the nation, we have the highest rate. And this highest rate is mostly used by people who don't have that extra money to spend on it. So it seems like an energy tax on the people who are least able to afford it. So please, join CEA. This alliance is good for all of us and it's a forward stepping, forward future thinking prospect for all of us. We want to make sure that our communities are, are supported by this and that the youth are ready to move into these clean jobs, clean energy, and they're prepared for the future. They know more about it than we do, actually. They know more about it than we do, but it's our job to prepare them to be able to move into that sector and it's not their job. They can't prepare for it except for knowledge and it's up for us to prepare those opportunities for them to get there. I didn't know how much minutes, how many minutes I had, I just came up and started talking, but that's just kind of how I do. All right? Thank you.
Youssef Miller.
Dear Mayor and City Council, my name is Naim Miller. I support renewable energy because clean air is important for everyone. If we have renewable energy, its energy will constantly be replenished without harming our air. Please adopt CEA. The burning of fossil fuels creates pollution that, that harms people's health. And also burning fossil fuels increases greenhouse gases. To protect our air we breathe and our climate, we need renewable energy, not burning fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Councilwoman Contreras, would you like to be recognized again, please?
Yes, thank you. I was putting my name on the list to second it, so I'm glad to hear that Mayor Ritter seconded the motion and that there's a lot of enthusiasm to move forward. And I do just want to say that, you know, now we're in a situation where the heat is just getting worse and worse every year. And, you know, I look over to the east and I see thunderheads and it's actually really- concerning, because we have so much dryness, dry brush and shrubs, that lightning could really be detrimental. It could start a fire. But with that said, you know, having these hotter days means that people are going to be running their air conditioning, those who do have it, and that's a huge cost. And some people need to be able to reduce their body heat, especially when we have a situation of heat waves and it doesn't get cooler at night. That's when we see that individuals that have different illnesses, that are younger, that are older, have a really hard time being healthy. So I really, really applaud this council for what looks like, you know, a lot of unanimous enthusiasm moving forward, and there's some discussions in the future that are going to be really important. And I do want to highlight the fact that with us joining CEA, you know, there is a firewall between our general fund and CEA. So that's really important, because we want to continue to be financially resilient in the city of Vista. But the other thing is that we actually can invest the, we can have a greater return of investment for our ratepayers, because we can look at subsidizing energy for those that are on fixed income or that earn a lower income households. And really important is that we can look at creating a robust workforce and workforce training for our community, for our residents, to move into higher-skilled jobs that aren't going to be going away, that can't be shipped overseas, that will continue to provide the opportunity to break out of generational issues, whether it be poverty or whatnot. So it's, this is an incredibly important decision, and there are so many community benefits that will come from us joining CEA, including not having to just have the options that an investor-owned utility monopoly gives us, including the ability to have citizen oversight with transparency, something that we currently do not have. And I really, everybody who's here, please, when we join CEA, understand that you have a seat at the table, and you have the ability to come and provide your comment and testimony, and lobby, and advocate for the things that you believe you want to see in your community. And I hope that we all take the opportunity to do that. With that said, I don't want to take too much more time, because I think we're ready to vote.
Seeing no more comment, we do have a motion in a second. Those members in the chambers, please cash your votes electronically. Mayor Ritter, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
That item passes unanimously. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to receive testimony regarding amendments to Title V of the Vista Municipal Code and the Vista Business Park Specific Plan relating to commercial cannabis cultivation, PH2. The public hearing is now open. City Clerk Kathy Valdez will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. At the February 22nd City Council meeting, City Council directed staff to research cannabis cultivation and bring back a draft plan to allow up to three licenses within the boundaries of Vista. Staff reviewed state regulations, the experiences of other jurisdictions, and the A1 agriculturally-zoned areas in the city of Vista. Many of the A1-zone parcels already developed, typically with estate homes, and those that are not already in use or currently used for agricultural purposes, are surrounded by residential housing. Most of the cannabis cultivation allowed in the county is limited to indoor cultivation. This is due to concerns over odors and security, which also results in neighborhood opposition. Staff therefore recommends that outdoor cultivation be prohibited, and that cannabis cultivation only be allowed in a fully enclosed building, and that location be limited to the Vista Business Park Specific Plan Area B, which is research light industrial zone. Additionally, the businesses must be authorized pursuant to a city-issued SUP, which is Special Use Permit, be outside a 600-foot radius surrounding any daycare center, youth center, youth-oriented business, public park, or K-12 school, and be outside a 600-foot radius of any existing residential uses. Allowable license types are recommended to be specialty cottage indoor, which is 500 square feet or less of total canopy; specialty indoor, which is 501 to 5,000 square feet of total canopy; small indoor, 500,001 to 10,000 square feet of total canopy; and medium indoor, which is 10,001 to 22,000 square feet of total canopy. Canopy means designated area or areas at a city license premises that contain or will contain growing or mature cannabis plants at any point in time. Multiple indoor cannabis cultivations may operate on a single lot, provided that the following are met. A city special use permit has been granted for cannabis cultivation and specifies the number and size of each proposed license premise. Each license premises is separately licensed by the city and the state for cannabis cultivation. The individual cannabis size of each cannabis cultivator complies with the state law, as you see on the slide there. And the cumulative canopy area for all cannabis cultivation operators on one lot does not exceed a total amount of 44,000 square feet. At any given time, the number of commercial cannabis cultivation licenses issued by the city shall not exceed three licenses. No person shall be issued more than one commercial cannabis cultivation license. No individual or entity shall own any amount of ownership interest in more than one city commercial cannabis cultivation license or commercial cannabis cultivation business operating in the city at any time. In accordance with Vista Municipal Code 7.10, commercial cannabis cultivation will be taxed by square foot of canopy and adjusted annually, but should not be decreased, based on the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers in San Diego-Carlsbad, California area. The cultivation tax rate for fiscal year 2223 shall be $15.31 per square foot of canopy. An application process utilizing a lottery system will be developed and publicized. The lottery will be used to determine the initial three businesses, as well as establish a waiting list. The waiting list will expire when all three commercial cannabis cultivation business licenses have been issued. Staff is recommending adopting the fee structure approved by the licensing of cannabis enterprise businesses as a fee structure for commercial cannabis cultivation. Commercial cannabis cultivation sites are also subject to the previously approved compliance and auditing fee. Fees are based on the anticipated staff time required to process each type of application or related item. That completes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Again, if you'd like to speak during the public hearing, please grab a speaker's card just outside the chamber and deliver it to the clerk. And we'll begin our public comments with John Byram, followed by Suzanne Hume.
Mayor, and City Council members, my, thank you for letting me address this agenda item. My name is John Byram, and I work for North Coastal Prevention Coalition. According to a study cited by the Sacramento Bee, the state's 1,142 acres of cannabis farmland can produce 9 million pounds of product. The market can only support 2 million pounds of sales. A cannabis lobbyist interview did not predict the industry collapse, but did say overproduction could lead to another extinction event for growers. In 2021, an article from Forbes, according to interviews with industry experts, California is growing entirely too much cannabis. The exact figures are not known, but according to one rough estimate, California's legal cultivators grow more than three times as much cannabis as is sold in legal dispensaries. Whatever the exact figure, the common belief is that there's so much cannabis in the market is flooded, prices are crashing, and legal growers are in the red this year, and may finally be forced out of business. With overproduction of marijuana in California, very little oversight is being done by the state of California. We do not know where the excess marijuana is going. I encourage you to consider this information related to marijuana overproduction during your discussion on this issue. Thank you.
Suzanne Hume, followed by John Badorf.
Hi, and thank you. My name is Suzanne Hume. I'm the educational director and founder of CleanEarthForKids.org. So primarily, we need to keep marijuana away from our kids. So I'll just speak about the 500 feet away, and then I thought I saw it 600 feet. 500 feet is, what, 200 steps? Naim knows how many steps are in 500 feet. So that's a no. Also, the low taxes that they have to pay relative to the damage. So we need to remember that marijuana is Prop 65, marijuana and marijuana smoke. So how does this impact our youth and their future? We really need to think about this. We have a lot of information that we can share. I won't belabor the point, because I know that there are going to be additional awesome speakers from Vista Community Clinic and North County Prevention, which we partner and are grateful. Anyway, so the Planning Commission, your Planning Commission voted no. So there are reasons for that. So we are hoping that you will vote no for many reasons, including what are the pesticides and toxic chemicals that are used? What are they? I mean, we could go on for days talking about pesticides and toxic chemicals. We have a ton of research. Anyhow, and who's going to be breathing this air, and what are the effects? And, you know, I just don't think that Vista or anybody should be promoting marijuana. We need to protect our children's brains, their learning, and their future. Thank you very much from CleanEarthForKids.org.
John Badorf, followed by Youssef Miller.
Good evening, City Council, and God bless you, Clean Earth for Kids. So there's a couple of things reading through the ordinance, one of which is, as Suzanne mentioned, it's, the limit's within 500 feet. These type of indoor cultivation produce a lot of noise, because they use big ventilator fans. So there's a matter of noise pollution. You've also, Suzanne mentioned, about the pesticides used, heavy pesticide use and fertilized use. So how are these fans kept from blowing any type of excess pesticides into the neighborhoods? You're talking 500 feet, that's point-blank range, basically. Even if it's in a business park, you've still got other businesses around, they're going to be exposed to the noise and the smells. Marijuana cultivation is well-known for being very, very smelly. So how is that going to be addressed? You've also got fertilizer and pesticide runoff. So it's indoor plants, so this is all being used in the water. Where is that water going? Is that going into the Vista Treatment Plant? What's the load for that? Marijuana cultivation is very water-intensive. We're talking six gallons per plant every day. We're in a drought, a very serious drought. So from a Vista water standpoint, how much water can you guys possibly provide to cultivators? If you get three large-scale cultivators, that's a lot of water. It's a very, very large amount of water. So also continuing to promote and add to an industry that works very hard to get kids to try their product, because they want lifelong customers. THC content in marijuana cannabis is way higher than it was back in the 70s and 80s and even the 90s. This is done intentionally to get people addicted and to make lifelong customers. All the marketing, I'm sure you guys have seen all of it, about the flavors and all this other marketing. It's the big tobacco playbook, it's the exact same formula that they use to get people hooked on cigarettes. That market is going away, and now that entire industry is moving towards cannabis. So please shut this down. Please vote no. Thank you.
Youssef Miller, followed by Naim Miller.
Mayor, City Council, Youssef Miller, NAACP North County, Clean Earth for Kids. And I'd like to start off first by saying that I am very supportive of cannabis equity. A lot of times, people of my community have been incarcerated, they've been locked up, they've been jailed over cannabis, and now that it's legal, they've been blocked out of even the equity as far as business for cannabis equity. So I want to say that out from the beginning. But at the same time, we have to be wise about cannabis and its spread in the community, and we have to be wise about this 500 feet. As you've heard already, the aerosol pesticides in our community, we have the runoff that are running off into our, the pesticide runoff that run off into our communities. We have a concern about lung health and heart health, and we're talking about smoking in general. And I'm not just saying marijuana, I'm not just talking about tobacco, any burning product, whether it's wood smoke, whether it's tobacco, or cannabis is no different with the toxins that come from burning material that goes into the lungs, especially the healthy lungs of our children. So as it's marketed to children, and it's flavored, and these things are attracting our children, we have to be wise about it. And I'll say again, I am for cannabis equity, because of what we've experienced in the black and brown community, when it came from over-incarceration of people selling cannabis. Now it's a legal thing, and people are getting paid a lot of money, getting wealthy and getting very established, and people are still incarcerated over the same issue. Equity is important, but we have to be smart. Let's not endanger our kids by trying to right this wrong and making it everywhere and accessible to everyone while we have runoff for pesticides and the advertisement to our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Naim Miller.
The Vista Planning Council already voted no to not expand the growing of marijuana. There are many reasons to vote no and not expand marijuana in Vista. It's important to keep marijuana and marijuana growing away from kids. The protection buffer is only 500 feet, is not enough. We also don't know what pesticides and toxic chemicals would be used on the marijuana. 500 feet is a very close distance. That is a suggested distance between, or suggested between marijuana growing and schools, homes, and parks where children play, go to school, to learn and live. Even if growing of marijuana is inside, was allowed, who is breathing that air and getting exposed to chemicals? It is important that you keep this away from kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Joe Green.
Dang, I had to push that button so many times in order for it to work. Technology is amazing. I think I'm going to have some questions for our planner, Mr. Conley. I'm assuming when it comes to like fees and zoning and stuff like that, you might be my guy? Come on down, my man. Thank you so much. So first of all, before we get started, I start asking you questions, I just want to say this is before us today, because as a council, in February, we discussed that we wanted to bring forward a make-sense policy for cannabis cultivation within our city. It does go to the Planning Commission for discussion, any recommendations they have, but then it comes back to the City Council. Similar to, you know, the 2018 Measure Z that was passed, we had a motion here prior to Measure Z was put on the ballot, where we tried to have three dispensaries within the city of Vista. Similar constituencies showed up, the council voted to not have three dispensaries, therefore Measure Z was initiated. And Measure Z currently allows 11 dispensaries within the city of Vista. I feel that there is a need for cannabis cultivation within our city. There has been a lot of, you know, interest from cannabis cultivators, and in the event we don't come up with a make-sense policy that protects our community, we could possibly get stuck with a lot more than three cannabis cultivation facilities within the city of Vista. So what I'm hoping today is that I can speak with my city planner here and my colleagues to come up with a make-sense policy here in Vista that protects our citizens and makes sure that our waterways are protected. sure that our waterways are protected, our water sources are protected, and that the products that are produced within Vista are safe and not overproduced. So thank you so much for being here, Mr. Conley. My question for you is, on page 32 of our agenda report, we have this zoning exhibit here, and it talks about which zones we're looking at putting cannabis in. Per this measure, it looks like we're looking at putting it in the Vista Business Park. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. How many daycare centers are in the Vista Business Park?
None.
How many youth centers are in the Vista Business Park? Aside from the trampoline center, are there any other youth-oriented businesses in the business park that you're aware of?
There are a few recreational uses, like gymnastics schools and things like that. So we'd be looking for those when we're citing these facilities.
Okay. And what is the distance Measure Z requires for these businesses to be away from youth-oriented facilities?
Same distance.
Same distance, 600 feet. Okay. And since Measure Z was implemented, have we had any issues with any of our youth-oriented facilities within 600 feet? Any reportable instances or occurrences or complaints from patronizers of those facilities extensively here in the city?
The only complaint we've had is from neighboring businesses for parking issues and things like that, and one of them is somewhat of a youth recreational facility to purchase goods.
Okay. So one youth recreational facility, so out of the 11 dispensaries that we have in our city, we've spaced them out in such a way that we've basically had one complaint about them as far as this traffic goes in the last, since we've implemented. So over the last four years, right? We've only had one. So in my opinion, the 600 feet that is in Measure Z is sufficient due to the amount of, you know, focused impact and complaints that we've had. I know when I brought cannabis forward, just as medical marijuana within the city, the focused impacts that were brought forward were outrageous as far as the amount of children that were going to be addicted, the people who were going to, the constituency that it was going to have, the security aspects that it was going to have. And I feel like over the time that it was implemented and the revenue that was generated, there's been a big lack of those focused impacts. And based off of, you know, past performance, I think a cultivation establishment within our Vista Business Park, being that it is not anywhere near youth facilities, and if there was a youth facility, it would be just as far away as an actual retail dispensary would be, which has represented a safe, I think that that is a makesense policy as far as I'm concerned. The question that I have for you is a couple of questions, okay? So number one, the $15.31 per square foot fee, you referenced businesses from 500 square feet up to 44,000 square feet. At 500 square feet, at $15.31, that's $7,655. And at 44,000 square feet, that's $673,640 in taxes based off of the per-foot taxation. Are those taxes to be paid annually, monthly, semi-annually, quarterly? When are those fees due?
I'm looking at Ms. Valdez here.
Any qualified personnel would be acceptable.
Those would be annual fees.
Okay. So annually, these cultivation places, if it's a jumbo-sized cultivator, they're going to personally be paying $673,000 in tax revenue that goes directly to, 100% of that goes directly to the city of Vista. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And these funds that are received from cultivation, will that be, is there a percentage of those that would be allocated towards our general fund? And then another percentage that would be allocated towards like our surplus spending at the end of the year? Or is that something that we would go over once we implement the policy? I think that's a city manager question, maybe?
It would be the general fund.
It would be the general fund, unless we advise differently?
Correct.
Okay.
But all of our other fees for the 11 dispensaries go into?
They first go into our general fund. So, okay, so we don't really want to change it. We want it to go into the general fund, but it may change the amount of money that we say we're allocating as revenue in the general fund, which could increase the amount of surplus spending we have to allocate for our citizens, which could be good in the long run. The medical, or the marijuana industry in the city of Vista over the last fiscal year, if I'm not mistaken, did it generate $5 million or $7 million in tax revenue? Was it five or? I know our forecast for next year.
So far, forecasting is close to $7 million.
Close to $7 million for the fiscal year. Okay. And in the event we had three 40,000-foot dispensaries, we could add another 1.2 million revenue on top of that, per se?
So the maximum is 22,000 square foot. So the 44 is if they were joined in the same site?
Got you.
But 22,000.
Okay. So the most revenue we could possibly get from this from cities, about an extra million bucks in revenue from cultivation. What I was also getting, as I heard somebody say, the amount of cannabis that was produced is much more cannabis than is consumed within, you know, California or America for that matter. And in the city of Vista, having 11 dispensaries, they would love to have a Vista-cultivated brand to sell in their establishments, similar to our breweries, and they all have local brews that they sell. As weird as that may sound to some, this is a business, and it has been a business that has been, you know, successful within our community and has been able to give a lot of funding to fantastic programs with, you know, marijuana prevention, law enforcement officers, park rangers. A lot of good has come with it, and there's a lot of other cities who are, you know, trying to get in this industry because they've seen how well as Vistans we've been able to do it and mitigate the focused impacts. I do want to make sure that with this cultivation, we have some type of noise and smell mitigation measure in there. I would think, is there a decibel level for the noise that we can use for their fans? And as far as smell mitigation, I've talked to a lot of cultivators that seem to think they can mitigate 100% of that smell to the surrounding businesses. What's your take on that?
So each of these applications would have to go through a discretionary review with the planning department. That's the special use permit. We'd be looking at the site, the floor plan, the proposed project, you know, chemical usage, compliance with Department of Environmental Health, et cetera. So that would all be evaluated by the staff as part of a special use permit. That's presented to the planning commission for approval, and it's appealable to the council.
Okay. And, you know, they talked about runoff, and I would assume that's like the stormwater runoff, the same type of thing that we have in our restaurants and actually in our industrial area. We have a lot of inspections on water quality and runoff and, you know, environmental requirements and stuff like that. All of these organizations or businesses, rather, are going to be susceptible to those same, you know, environmental quality requirements than any other businesses, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that there, anything that they do is going to still have to be in line with all of our state and local requirements. There's going to be no additional effect on our watershed from a contamination standpoint based off of these businesses due to our strenuous and stringent inspection policies, I would say. Is that fair?
I would agree, yes.
Okay. All right. So that takes care of the storm waters. Let's see, da-da-da-da-da. Just want to make sure I got everything here. Water use. From an equity standpoint, the Millers came, and Yusef and your son, Naim, I believe. Thank you guys for coming and speaking. We spoke about an equity component, and I've seen some of these other cities, actually, when we talk about cannabis. I know it's a lottery situation and things, but there was an equity component added, and obviously we'll talk, this is, some of them probably need to talk to the council later, but in the event the, you know, lottery is awarded and there is not equity given to the owners, I've seen in different cities where they add a social equity component where they're like, hey, we need to add a, you know, equitable business based off of our demographic. Have you seen that in any other cities? I mean, I've read some like Long Beach and things like that, but from a legal standpoint?
So the county of San Diego and the city of San Diego were looking at that. The other cities, I don't believe, had any equity in it. But, so there's different levels, I think, that people do, but that would require going back and really developing a whole plan to do that.
Yeah, exactly. And that was kind of the thing initially with Measure Z is it was voted on by the people. It was a medical measure, and you can't really change something that was voted on by the people. And that's why when we're implementing stuff at the council level, we should be able to kind of, you know, integrate those policies and things. So I don't know if my council would be, you know, favorable to it, but even in a lottery, you know, standpoint, I would say at least one of the businesses to go to a certain, you know, demographic or socially economically challenged, you know, I don't know, subcategory that represents our community. I don't know how that would work. We'll have to talk to the attorney about it, but from a lottery standpoint, is there any way to put an oversight on there where we say, hey, look, 56% of Vista residents are Hispanic or, you know, people of color, therefore, we want to make sure that 33% of the, you know, licenses or lotteries awarded are awarded to, and not that, I mean, if, obviously if it's awarded, say, three are awarded, you know, and they're, you know, all for a, you know, particular subgroup, that would be okay too. But as long as we have a minimum set, is there any way to set anything like that from an equity, social equity scale, or how does that work?
I don't believe in, our attorney can.
That's why I got an attorney.
But I believe that with the lottery system, we would not be able to do that. We'd have to change the application process or only, you know.
Or we'd have to do a lottery?
If they were only.
Okay. So maybe we would do two standard lotteries and one equity lottery or something for the third. I don't know. I'd like to, I don't know if that's something that we have to figure out right here or not. I mean, we're talking about the lottery process, and I've just seen a lot of municipalities have to go back and change their ordinances and add additional businesses because of the lack of equity, whether it be from a voter-approved initiative or a council-initiated initiative. If you don't have some type of equity clause in whether it's a voter initiative or a council-implemented initiative, there could be a change forced upon you in the future. So as opposed to spend a ton of money, you know, two or three years down the line because we don't have equitable business owners in this particular area, because it's really like winning the lottery. I mean, literally recalling it, the lottery, okay? So I really feel like in order to protect, you know, our businesses in our city, you know, we should have something like that if we think that there's going to be an issue with not having equity within those businesses, if that makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, tell me it doesn't make sense. But my job to protect my city and my citizens, and that's an issue that's come up regularly in other cities that have marijuana policies.
So Councilman Green, it does make sense. However, we, staff would have to go back and analyze this. As the item is presently before you, it would authorize a generic lottery.
Okay.
So if we, if you as a council direct us to implement some type of weighted lottery, some type of equity system, we would need to go back and clearly define the factors and the parameters of that so that, you know, so a reasonable person would understand exactly how the system is working and how the weighting is going to work.
Yeah. I don't think it's so much a weighted system as I think that you would want to give your, you know, marginalized community that needs to be represented the option of going in either a special lottery or the general lottery, per se. And I mean, you might have a better shot of getting one of two licenses in the general lottery, but there is definitely one license going to, you know, this particular subcategory or, you know, a group, whether it's a, you know, a veteran or, you know, African-American, Hispanic individual, disabled, I mean, whatever that protected category is that we want to make sure has equitable ownership. I almost think that it's not a change in the lottery, it's just its own lottery in itself so that we give, you know, one of the three licenses goes to, you know, an equitable member of our community guaranteed. So like if you want to, you know, the only way to guarantee it, obviously, is give them all, you know, have one lottery that's done for our, you know, diverse business owners, whether it's a woman-owned business, you know, I mean, there's a lot of different protected categories. We don't got to go over all of them, but I think that there should be one awarded to that because like out of our 11 dispensaries, I don't know how many of our 11 dispensaries are owned by Hispanic individuals, African-American individuals, females, you know, veterans. I mean, there's a lot of different classes that we all fight up here for, and I don't know that every one of them is represented in our, you know, retail cannabis program. And I would assume, based off of what I've seen in other cities, that that might come to us someday, and in order to avoid that with this and a ballot measure, I think that we may need to put some extra oversight on it. That's all. I'm just a cover-my-butt type of guy.
So in looking at the proposed municipal code additions, 5.97.080B does say the city manager shall establish the schedule rules and procedures for the submittal of applications. A lottery system will be used to select the initial three commercial cannabis cultivation businesses allowed to apply for a license. So I do think there is some flexibility if that's directed.
Okay. So that's something we don't have to decide right here, but maybe we can all discuss with our city manager prior to determining the actual application process? Is that some fair?
I don't think you need to decide the mechanism, but I do think if the council's in favor of that, I would like direction tonight if that's what you want to do, and then we'll set up a system that can work towards that.
I'll say that I'm in favor of at least having one of the three businesses awarded to a, you know, subcategory, a protected interest category, whether it's Hispanic, African-American, veteran-owned, some type of protected class. I really feel like one of these dispensaries should be guaranteed, and I would also like the information of, you know, I don't know if it's necessary or not, but what are the current ownership makeup of our current dispensaries? And is there equity within that? And if not, it will be a good predictor of, hey, we really should do this because the equity that's established in our retail, you know, businesses aren't there. Therefore, we need to do it in our cultivation businesses. So, cool. All right. I just want to throw that out there. So I support it. We'll hear from everybody today, but that's something I wanted to throw out there because I didn't want to have a future issue. Let's see. I think that was it from a cultivation standpoint. I support cannabis cultivation within the city of Vista. I think having three dispensaries within our Vista-specific plan does ensure that they're not by youth facilities or schools. I believe the oversight that we're going to have from the planning commission and code enforcement and environmental protection agencies is going to protect our waterways and our environmental air pollution quality aspects. And I really think that this is something that's going to be good for Vista in the future. And if we don't do this, another city is going to do it, and we might not have the opportunity for this business. So thank you so much. That's what I have to say, and I'm curious this year, my council's at.
Councilwoman Melendez. Councilwoman Contreras.
I'm sorry. For some reason, my name left the request to speak. I don't know why. Thank you so much. Actually, I really appreciate, thank you, Councilmember Green, for bringing forward a lot of questions. I initially had that question as well as, you know, is this tax rate going to be annual or not? Because that's a huge difference if it's annual or one time. And I really appreciate you bringing up social equity. That is definitely something that, you know, unfortunately, in 2018, we didn't just, the council at that time should have probably done a copycat version of Measure Z and closed up the loopholes and added social equity, but unfortunately, that did not happen, and now we have to follow Measure Z unless it goes back to the people for a whole new vote. But I am 100% in favor of social equity, you know, whether it's a bifurcation lottery system where, you know, the social equity goes to two of the businesses, or, you know, the best-case scenario would be that all three of the businesses have a social equity stipulation, kind of like a weighted vote situation when it comes to different markers of social equity and protected classes, including, you know, any indigenous owners. So I'm 100% in favor of that, and, you know, I think in general, even when it comes to our retail, you know, maybe we don't have the ability to have social equity within that ownership, but just as we're discussing how important social equity is when we're looking at this cannabis cultivation, we, as a council, could promote a social equity fund whereby our cannabis sales tax revenue dollars, whether it's for cultivation or for retail storefronts, where we can create a social equity fund and really champion, you know, different aspects of social equity, including some of the ones that we fought for in our climate action plan, such as equity in our tree canopy. Maybe we have a tree for trees, you know? I mean, we could be really creative. This is Vista, and we can, we can really look forward to closing some of the inequities that we have here, and we can be creative and fun at the same time. You know, when we were first looking at expanding cannabis uses, whether it was manufacturing, distribution, laboratory testing, you know, we had a lot of folks come forward and tell us, you know, hey, these are some of the issues that we might face in our community. Thankfully, we haven't seen those issues really come to fruition. In fact, our community has become safer because we have safe access to cannabis. Prohibition just doesn't work. You know, it is not a good way to move forward. You know, I, for one, too much cannabis growing in California, that's great. That means that we don't have cartels fighting and bringing cannabis from south up to the north. I mean, there's so many benefits of having cannabis under a regulatory system because it really, we have the ability to promote different equity clauses and whatnot. But, you know, one of the things that I wanted to champion when we were discussing. Um, but, you know, one of the things that I wanted to champion, uh, when we were discussing, uh, expanding our cannabis uses, uh, was a robust auditing system. And, you know, thankfully, um, the council, everybody was in favor of that, including a robust decoy, right, system. Um, and I think that this should be no different. Um, anytime we're expanding the use of cannabis in our community, we have to ensure that there aren't any negative consequences and that those are mitigated. Uh, so I would like to see us, uh, have a robust auditing system. Um, when it comes to, uh, you know, making sure we have fire prevention, enough staff on fire prevention to, uh, make sure that these facilities are, uh, up to code and, and, uh, that there isn't an issue, uh, where, you know, there might be a fire in the industrial park. Um, I think that, you know, we should be looking at, if we could, I mean, it'd be great to have organic and pesticide-free. I, I don't know, um, what we can do on that front. Uh, but, uh, I think at minimum, we should be able to audit these businesses and ensure that they are operating in a safe and legal fashion. Um, more oversight is always better when it comes to, uh, any kind of substance that may alter, uh, your, uh, status quo feelings, your baseline, uh, behaviors, right? So, um, I'm 100% in favor of adding, uh, a robust auditing system. Um, and, you know, expanding the decoy into this too, uh, however that might look. Um, but yeah, I just don't think prohibition works. Uh, it hasn't. Um, there's been a lot of negative consequences. Uh, and I do think that, um, at this point, you know, we have a, a really unique opportunity here in the city of Vista to have a locally grown, uh, product, um, that can have, you know, special marketing, you know, applied to it, locally grown. Uh, and, um, you, you just never know where that can take you. Vista could end up becoming famous in the world for, you know, whatever Vista strand or something, strain or something like that. Who knows, right? Um, so I am 100% in favor, um, I, at this point, you know, I understand that the Planning Commission voted against it. I think, you know, uh, we're a council, so we have final say. So, um, that's just the way it is. Uh, so I, I, I am 100% in favor. Um, I actually will make a motion to accept, uh, um, to move, yeah, the presentation and close the public hearing if there are no other comments. Um, but I do want to add a social equity component to the lottery system. And I would want to have a robust auditing system. So I would want to add that. Uh, make sure that that is included in the motion, if that's legally possible.
So Councilwoman Contreras, we do have provisions for a robust auditing system in section 5.97.160. If the businesses would have to allow any city officials, its agents to come onto the property and inspect anything, including building and fire codes, inspect any equipment, inspect any books, any security video footage. So we would have access to the whole establishment.
Perfect. Thank you for putting that in the public record. That is incredible. Um, and I'm glad that we're having a symmetrical approach between, uh, our other uses and this expanded use. Um, so then I guess I don't need to include that in my motion, but the social equity component will still stand as part of the motion. Um, and with that, uh, I have no other comments or questions. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman, I, I just want to jump in and say that, um, I liked your suggestion about creating a fund. Uh, perhaps we could use some portion of these revenues for tree canopy, as well as perhaps lighting in, uh, unreserved communities, parts of our city. Um, and I would commit to you, uh, to have a conversation at a future council meeting, maybe the next one we convene, uh, about such a program. Um, I would just point out that if we add, uh, a, a provision without definition, uh, staff's going to have to write that, bring it back to us, which will delay the implementation of this. Um, so if, if you'd be willing to, uh, accept staff's proposal, I would commit to you, uh, to come back and have a conversation about that fund, if that's acceptable to the other members of the council.
Just to answer back, uh, I would like to hear from the rest of my council, but, um, I think, you, you know, even outside, whether we have a social equity or not in our cultivation, which I would want to, I think that that's an important discussion to have and I really appreciate you highlighting that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Melendez.
Thank you for everyone's comments, um, for our city staff for preparing, um, this measure and advancement, um, within our city and for everyone who spoke. I completely understand that there are concerns about the commercialization of the sacred plant. And we have a responsibility as leaders to make sure that our community is safe from, uh, pollution, from harm, um, and, you know, from any anticipated negative side effects, right, that may come about, um, which is why I think it is so important that we are talking about, uh, equity. Because I think one of the greatest harms that has come from the commercialization of the sacred plant is that, uh, there are entire communities that have been pulled apart, um, because of the perception of the, the use of cannabis, because of the, uh, historical war on drugs. And now with the commercialization of cannabis, uh, we're not seeing, um, the justice that needs to happen within those communities. So I, um, I am supportive of cultivation of cannabis in the city of Vista, not for the industry itself, but because this is an industry that is, uh, making its way through municipalities throughout California. And I want to ensure that, um, people in Vista, communities here in Vista, have the same opportunities, if not better, more thought out, more robust opportunities to participate in this market of the commercialization of a sacred plant. Um, that's going to be my point of view. I understand that, you know, each of us have our own unique experiences. And, um, we have to consider all the facts and information. So I really appreciate Councilmember Green asking questions about, um, what are we doing to protect the environmental concerns, right? Um, what are, uh, the potential audits that we need to take? Um, such as Councilmember Contreras brought up, brought up, in order to ensure that this industry, as much as any other industry in our community, um, has the checks and balances that it needs in order to keep our community safe. Um, that's not to say that there's not safety concerns. Uh, that's why I think that, um, ongoing regulatory process is going to be, um, the best way forward. And then also an implementation of equity measures, which I believe is, it's necessary for it to be more than, you know, um, kind of speaking to that interest. But as a council, developing a plan for how we want to distribute these tax revenues into our community in a way that is thoughtfully equitable and historically, um, guided, an understanding of, right, who, what, where, and how our community has been affected by cannabis and how we can go forward in a way that is going to be restorative in our community. Um, one of my questions that I have is about the, um, tax rate. Um, how do we get to that number?
So the, um, measure that was approved that set the tax rate was $14 and it included a CPI increase beginning, um, July 1st of 2020. So going back and looking at that. So it's a CPI increase each year. So that will continue to go up, um, or at least stay the same. It will not decrease.
Okay, wonderful. And for the record, I just want to provide direction, um, as requested from our city manager, that I am in support of, um, you know, applying equity measures to, um, cannabis tax revenues, um, whether it be from cultivation, whether it be from, uh, the sales in one of our many shops. Um, just going forward, I, I believe, you know, it's a change in culture that is much needed uh, for our city to apply an equity lens to what we're doing within not only this industry, but all industries within our community, have the opportunity to, um, include more equity. And hopefully, uh, since we're having such a critical conversation about the commercialization of cannabis, that we could also have, you know, future critical conversations about, uh, you know, the commercialization, um, of other, uh, products and resources within our community and how we can better seek out equity within our entire local economic market. Um, I would go ahead and second your motion that we close the public hearing and, um, approve staff's recommendations. And I thank you for your time.
Mayor Ritter, I just want to check with you at this time, see if you, uh, wanted to weigh in on.
I'll, I'll weigh in on it. Um, my feeling is we have the 11 dispensaries that the voters, you know, voted and they were approved by them. And for sure, it helped our general fund and our budget and it helped us to do some projects that we might not have been able to do otherwise. Um, but we have a really successful business park and historically low, um, vacancy rates out there. And so I, I don't want to expand that type of business into our business park. We, we have, um, you know, so many amazing businesses in our business park. And I, you know, with our, with a low vacancy rate, I, I just want to keep it to the business, you know, other type of businesses. I, I just don't want to see this. Um, I, I, I just, I don't want to see this type of business expand. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm probably the only one that's not going to support it, but, um, but that, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, now is the motion that's on the floor, is that, uh, that includes an amendment to the, uh, to the ordinance that's been presented and prepared by staff? Yes?
The amendment being the social equity component.
Very good.
Well, it was added, so I don't, I don't think it's necessarily an amendment, but it was part of the original motion.
So if I can, Deputy Mayor and Councilwoman Contreras, we don't need an amendment to the ordinance. It's just direction to the city manager as he develops the procedures for the lottery, that he include the social equity component.
So are you saying that the, uh, city manager is going to bring back an ordinance?
No, we have the ordinance in front of you tonight and, uh, if you will pass it or prove it tonight, that would be all we need to move forward and the city manager would develop rules and regulations for the lottery system that includes the equity.
Cause his authority is already listed in the current ordinance. Got it. Okay.
I mean, my concern is that we've been insufficiently specific and distinct with the language here. Um, we haven't defined which classes. Um, I, I feel like we're going to need to have that conversation before we can, uh, move forward here. Uh, Councilman Green?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Contreras and, uh, Councilwoman Melendez. I appreciate you, Walter, as the attorney kind of clarifying that. Um, I agree with, uh, actually Councilmember, uh, Karina Contreras and Councilmember Melendez in that, uh, the way the ordinance is written is that the city manager has the ability to come up with the application processes and the lottery process, which is acceptable to the council to basically present to the businesses. Therefore, what we're doing is saying, hey, we want, we want cannabis cultivation. We want the city manager to come up with a application process and lottery process that is acceptable to the majority of the council with some type of social equity. It is open right now, but the city manager, prior to approving the application and the lottery process, will poll the council, I'm assuming like you normally do, to make sure that the application you present is approvable by the majority of the council and that all of the classes that we want to represent as protected classes in that lottery for equity purposes would be represented. Does that, is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, if that's a, if that's the council's purview.
Well, that's what I want to make sure. I think that that's what Councilwoman Contreras went with her measure was to say, hey, we want to have some type of social equity component within the, you know, the lottery system. Um, yeah, so that's, that's what it is. It's not an amendment to the motion at all. You're saying we understand you to have the power to make that application something that all of us council members can agree with. Frankly, you know, we may not have the same ideas of what the equity is, but I think that together we can make sure that all classes are included in there that should be considered, you know, protected classes and equitable. So I'm okay with the motion as is and I was going to offer a substitute motion to go back to what the original motion was, but it sounds like we don't need to because we've directed the city manager to not only move forward with cannabis cultivation in this motion, but also make a palatable social equity adjustment to it, correct? So that's what we're voting on. Thank you. I'm cool. Great motion. Great second.
So you're telling me that you feel that with direction from the council, that you have the ability to create policy without an, an action of the council, defining to grant preferences in the way that this government treats certain individuals, uh, based on their race, gender, uh, certain statuses without the approval of the council?
What I'm saying is I'm happy to do what Councilman Green said, which is check in with the council and develop a program or a lottery system that would meet the needs of, of the majority of the council. If the council would like, you can adopt as-is the ordinance and we could bring back the specifics of a lottery system, uh, at the August 9th meeting.
That would be acceptable to me.
To the council.
And I would be voting, uh, with the majority to adopt this item if we're going to have an opportunity to understand what it is that we're approving, uh, if staff's going to bring it back. But writing a blank check for staff to treat people differently based on the color of their skin or their gender or other identities, um, that is not something that I'm going to sign a blank check for. Um, I believe that all people should be treated equally under the law. And I mean, I'm looking at what California voters did in 2020 with Prop 16. 58% of Californians rejected racial preference in college admissions. They voted to uphold the Prop 216, uh, which is enshrined in the state constitution, treating people equally based on their race under law. Um, I think we made a mistake in years past, a huge number of mistakes in our nation's history by treating people differently based on the color of their skin. And I don't believe that we should repeat that mistake by, I mean, I, I don't even, we don't even know what we're discussing here because there's no definition to it. But I'm not going to go along with a blank check on treating people differently without some really clear specificity about exactly what it is that's being proposed. That's deeply concerning to me.
Understandable. And, um, this is what I propose is I think as long as we're not slowing up the process for implementing cultivation, uh, I'm okay with you saying, hey, we're going to move forward to cultivation right now and you will come back and specify exactly what that lottery preference is because it's not necessarily a color of your skin per se from a, you know, equity standpoint. There's going to be a lot of different classes. Exactly what you say.
I don't even know what it is.
You don't want to do a blank check and neither do I. And that's what I was kind of, you know, my council members, we're all gonna, we all want our protected classes within there. And I'm not saying I want to treat people different, but there are different treatments for different people. Like you want to do different things for veterans. We want to do different things for, uh, you know, single moms. I want to do different things for battered women. Like there's different protections of classes that we have different programming for. And this is going to be a different program, in my opinion. But like you say, I want something specific. I don't want to sign a blank check. And I personally don't think it was a blank check. I know that our city manager. Exactly. And you may not agree with it when all is said and done, but I think at the end, we, our city manager is not going to do anything that the majority of the council doesn't agree with because he works for the council. So I felt as if we're not signing a blank check. He specifically said he was going to talk to us before anything happened. But I'm okay with him bringing it back in public and us all being on the record with what we're okay with as a, uh, you know, social equity clause in here. Cause that's what we want to do, right? To say, hey, I want to be on the record as yes or no with whatever that social equity clause is, correct? You don't want to sign a blank social equity clause.
I want the council to vote to approve, uh, whatever policy this is.
Yeah, not just let him do it.
I, I don't even know what it is.
Yeah.
So.
It could say people who graduate from SDSU get priority for all we know.
That, that's.
Sorry, he graduated from SDSU. I had to throw that in there.
If that's the case, then the maker of the motion would have to amend the motion or there'd have to be a. or there'd have to be a substitute motion.
Okay.
I'd like to vote with you if we can just have a public discussion about what this is, and we can discuss the policy and all adopt it at our next council meeting.
Okay, so, well, it's Councilwoman Contreras's turn to talk.
Councilwoman Contreras?
Thank you. If we're speaking about blank checks, I think we should look at, if we really wanted to look at social equity, we should look at reparations and do blank check that way. But I do find it a little bit offensive that the social equity component is being equated to a blank check. I think that that's completely inappropriate. I also don't think that accepting the motion as-is would cause a detriment in our community. So I don't necessarily stand by the argument that's being made to change the motion on the floor. I just, I don't think it's necessary. I think that the law is pretty clear about what protected classes are, and that those protected classes would be part of the social equity criteria. So as much as, you know, I just wish that this wasn't a point of contention, because I want to understand, Deputy Mayor, a little bit more, but I think it, a little bit more about your perspective, but I think at the end of the day, it might just be an ideological difference between the maker of the motion and the need to look at it being amended or substituted. So I do want to say, like, I kind of get what you're saying, I just don't think that it's, what you're saying is going to happen. And, you know, we're not really talking about the state level, we're just talking about our own community, our own backyard, and, you know, the fact that in this community of the city of Vista, you know, I've been here my whole life, 34 years, and, you know, I grew up in a time where the Minutemen could go and harass and intimidate individuals simply based on the color of their skin. So thankfully, that it's different now, but those wounds and those scars don't go away after 34 years. So I will be keeping my motion exactly as it is, and if it fails, then it fails, but I don't feel like I need to change it at this point. Thank you.
So what I'm asking for is for the policy to return and to be approved formally in front of the city by the city's elected body, the council, and what I would ask you is, why would you deprive the people of the opportunity to have that debate, make a decision in open, transparent fashion in front of the people of Vista, have a debate, vote on a policy, and approve it as the people intended? What would your opposition to that be?
My opposition to that would be that it's unnecessary, and that I was voted in by constituency, and I have gone in to learn a lot about the different issues throughout the city of Vista and gotten to meet a lot of different people, and I have the authority given to me by those who elected me to make decisions with my own independent thinking for four years, and that's what I'm doing right now. I don't believe it's necessary to bring this back, and if my motion fails, then it fails. That's where I stand.
I mean, what you said, what I heard you say was that the people of Vista elected you to make these decisions, and so all I'm asking is that we make the decision, as you said, we were elected to make them delegating the authority to staff and not being willing to bring our ideas before the people and to defend our ideas and to obtain consensus of the council and the community. I'm just, I'm on something that's, could be as consequential as this, I don't know why you would deprive the people of the fair and open conversation and the opportunity to see their representatives vote in public. Sonia Robinson asked to speak. Could we ask Ms. Robinson to come for an address, council?
Thank you. I can't say that I have necessarily a dogfight on what is before the council to vote as far as the park with the cannabis, yet I felt very impelled to speak on equity. I am a climate justice equity advocate. I've been a climate justice advocate for many years throughout the county of San Diego, the state of California, and even across the country. And so one of the things I want to bring to this council's attention, that race is the number-one indicator where toxins are located, and so the history in this country and understanding that equity does not mean equal. Equity literally means that the burden of toxins, the burden of injustices are on the shoulders of Black and Brown community members throughout the country, and even more specifically here in Vista and throughout New York County, throughout the county of San Diego. We have data supporting this. So the fact that this council brought for something to consider as far as a social equity fund, I applaud. I advocated for a climate equity fund through the city of San Diego, and they did accept that through their franchise agreement. I will also just bring to attention that I hope to meet with some of you councils to talk about having a climate equity fund and what that looks like, and how the city of Vista could benefit with their constituents and their residents here in the city of Vista. So I just wanted to be on record to say that equity does matter, and equity does not mean equal. Equity means that you're helping to mitigate the harm that has already been historically placed on communities of color and low and moderate income constituents throughout a community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say, for the record, no matter what we do on this, I support the discussion about the climate equity fund and putting some of this money towards trees and lighting. I will just point out that, one, I think the city manager and the city attorney are wrong. I don't think that they have the ability to take that kind of, that extent of authority without it being put into specific language and adopted in the municipal code. So I'm not in agreement with their determination there. Two, this item will come back because I will bring it back on the agenda, and we will have an opportunity to debate the specifics of it. And, you know, you would not be pleased with me offering an undefined, we're amending an ordinance here, and you're saying that the specific language of the amendment to the ordinance doesn't need to be included as part of what's adopted by council, and I'm not okay with that because I don't think that's accurate. So I have a problem with the process. I have a problem with this council refusing to have a transparent and open discussion, refusal to discuss in front of the public what it is that our core values are, to stand up for, defend, advocate what our core values are, tell the people what we believe, and stand up and be counted, and be accountable to the voters with our vote to vote for what it is we believe. I think that that is extremely disappointing to me. Councilwoman Melendez, I believe you're next.
Thank you, and since we're on the topic of equity, I personally prefer the term council member versus councilwoman. I just don't feel like my sex needs to be brought up every single time that I speak, so if you could, please respect that preference. I'm really glad that we have a professional in the audience that was able to share with us a little bit about what equity is, because I am starting to see the disconnect in this conversation, and I think that where I stand and where my colleagues stand, who are ready to create equity measures within our, you know, cannabis cultivation, tax revenues, and processes, is that, you know, I understand that there's a specific historical experiences that warrant equity, right? There have been specific historical inequities and injustices where certain communities, particularly Black communities, Brown, Latino communities, have been specifically affected by, you know, anti-drug policies and harsher sentencing and stuff like that. So when we're even talking about protected classes here, in the context of cannabis, we're also considering, right, people who may have criminal records, people who may be formerly incarcerated, and I believe that our city staff has the resources and the ability to develop a historically relevant equity clause within cannabis cultivation. That equity measure might look different than an equity measure that we adopt regarding climate, right? Because there's certain areas in our community that, you know, because of the cultural and historical context, you know, some parts of our city of Vista might have more resources because of the prioritization of single-family zoning, for example, and other areas might be more regarded as an appropriate location for higher-density development, right? So that's where we might have a difference in our climate and environmental equity versus when we're having a cannabis conversation. There are specific historical events, public policies, and, you know, experiences of those who are part of the community that has been affected that I, you know, I hope, and maybe we can even get the, a sense of understanding from our city manager, right? You know, would this be something that is, you know, just looking at all protected classes without historical context? Or is an equity clause for cannabis going to be something that is historically rooted, you know, and researched and developed based on, right, the material realities and experiences of people who have been affected poorly by cannabis policy in the past, right? I don't know if you could answer that, city manager?
No, I'd have to do some research.
Okay.
So the state does have an equity program, and it does look at individuals who have been negatively impacted by cannabis legislation.
Okay, so there's a state precedent.
That would be one thing that we could look at.
Precedent as well.
I don't know what the city and the counties' social equity clauses look like.
Okay, this is all really good information, right? So I think part of the disconnect in this conversation is what, you know, our three colleagues here, you know, we have a sense of what equity is and how we want to accomplish it, because, you know, from my understanding, we're all understanding of the historical context, right? Maybe there's a difference in point of view in that historical context, but that's where some of us are fighting for equity on the basis of just understanding that there's a historical context where there has been inequity. So I don't know if that's adding helpful clarification to the conversation, but I felt like it was important to reference that there's a specific historical context within the conversation about cannabis that would lend itself to a specific equity clause. Thanks.
So you said you have a sense of what equity is. I just heard you ask clarifying questions between two different pretty significant thoughts about what equity would mean in this particular sense. Don't you feel that as a council member, that you should be involved in the development of this policy if it's as important as you claim that it is? Don't you want to do that in public in front of the voters and stand up for what you believe?
I think it's more important for me to advocate for this type of policy versus micromanaging what it looks like, because I understand that there's a historical reality that Black and Brown individuals have experienced because of certain cannabis legislation and harsher sentencing, and I'm not, you know, an expert on these things, right? I have minimal knowledge, right, which is why we all have to work together, you know, but based on my minimal understanding of historical inequities, it's important for me to advocate for equity. It's less important for me to, you know, make sure that the details of that are comfortable for me as an individual, and this is, you know, these are things that people elected me for, right? That these are the values, right? You talked earlier about how can we defend our values? I'm absolutely defending my values by advocating for equity. It's something that I, you know, promoted a lot during my campaign, it's something that citizens told me that they cared about, right? That they're aware that there are historical inequities, and they're saying, we want a representative that is going to advance equity. I mean, there's so many inequities that we honestly couldn't even cover them all, right? And even a small amount of research would help us see that there are a lot of ways that we need to improve the conditions for people that have been historically disenfranchised. So, you know, I think maybe even just as an educational advantage, right? Being able to put city staff resources towards developing a really robust, right, educational component about what equity looks like in our community, and some of the historical inequities that Vista, as a municipality, has participated in, because I'm ignorant about those as well, right? I know that there have been, you know, terrible atrocities that have occurred to Native and Indigenous people here. I know that, you know, there's a Latino community here that has been incredibly harmed by our authorities in our community, and, you know, I think that there's a lot to learn about. So I'm definitely interested in learning, but I'm more focused on advocating for the equity because I do recognize and believe that there's a historical precedent of inequities.
So, I mean, I just, as a question, and I'm just, I wrote down a few of the words that you said, because you were very eloquent. You said that you were elected for this.
Mm-hmm.
But you also said that the details of it weren't concerning to you, and you didn't need to be involved, and so, just as a question, I'm legally an Indigenous person, I'm one 128th Oklahoma Choctaw. My spouse is American Cherokee. Would I qualify under your definition of the equity component? There's some questions to be answered here that I'm just surprised that you wouldn't want to have a say in, since I wrote down here that you said you were elected to make these policies. I mean, what's going on here, just so that the community's aware, is you're completely willing to stand up for your values, and I appreciate that you are, but you're not willing to yield on the simple concept of bringing this back because you don't want me to win this.
I didn't say that.
No, I'm, I have the floor, please. I didn't interrupt you.
I didn't say that.
I didn't interrupt you. Okay? I'm asking that it come back for discussion and vote. That's all I'm asking. Probably you have a majority to vote for whatever it is you want. I might vote for it. I don't even know what it is. The mayor doesn't know what it is. The city manager has no idea what it is. He can't articulate it. The city attorney cannot articulate it. The city clerk cannot articulate it. You cannot articulate it. Not one person in this room tonight can articulate exactly what it is that you're describing broadly with a single, okay, okay, please. All I'm asking for is when we make a law in this city, that we use words that a reasonable person, to quote our city attorney, could understand, so that there is no ambiguity. You deserve, every citizen of the city of Vista deserves to know what the law is, and you deserve, you have a right to hold your elected leaders accountable for what it is that they do to create law and policy. You deserve that. You have every right and entitlement to that. What this is about is you don't want to allow me to score the tiniest of victories for transparency. I mean, that's the way it feels, maybe I'm, I'm sorry if my perspective is just different than yours is, but that's what I'm hearing here, but we're delegating with this motion, we're delegating authority to the city manager to come up with a policy, the specifics of which will not come back to a vote of this council because, quote, "the details are not important enough, but we were elected to do this." I just, I'm failing to grasp. I just, I'm failing to grasp why we can't have that conversation. I don't think that you'll be able to explain it when your constituents ask you why you couldn't have a conversation, have a vote in front of the public. That's my personal point of view. I'm, you know, not on the substance of what we're doing here with cultivation because I think it's very important, speaking to the matter for a second, I am deeply concerned that we have the ability with the special-use process to ensure that residences and other youth programs, youth-oriented businesses are not impacted by noise or smell. That is incredibly important to me. At the same time, I generally support the idea of our local cannabis businesses being able to work with local cannabis vendors. I supported testing businesses. I supported their right to compete with out-of-city delivery companies by offering them the right to deliver, to compete with those who are robbing our tax revenues. I support the addition of tax revenues, and as I said, I support the creation of the environmental equity fund that we discussed. You know, you're trying to paint me as somehow opposed to the word equity or the concept of equity and saying that you have a better understanding of it than I do, but the reality is no one in this room tonight has been able to define in a way that the law would dictate, and you know I'm correct, that a reasonable person would understand. And therefore, it's not going to stand up in court. So for that reason, because apparently this council is going to make policy by dictating our prerogatives as council members to the staff, and we're going to create legislation, we're going to create ordinances without the action of this council, this body, because that's what we're going to do, I can't vote for this. Councilman Green.
Mr. Chung. Is it required that we have our city manager's policies brought back to us in order to be implemented as enforceable policies? Yes or no?
No.
Okay. So where I'm at as a councilperson, I don't feel like I'm allowing my city manager to create a policy by any means. Last time I checked, the city manager works for us as a council, and he's not really allowed to do anything unless the majority of the council approve his actions. All I can, you know, assure you of, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is that when we talk about equity, there will be a clear, concise picture of what that equity is and why it is going to be implemented and what the requirements are for that based off of case law, based off of information in order to protect the city and in order to ensure equity. They're two things. It's not just putting an equity clause in here. It's also protecting our city and our residents from having to either redo this policy or put this to a vote of the people in order to change things. I agree with Councilmember Contreras and Councilwoman Lindes that I feel like I can instruct my city manager with the help of my fellow councilmembers, my mayor and my deputy mayor, to have a policy that is approvable by the majority of my council before it's implemented. Several items are handled either on the consent calendar or by discussion between the city manager and councilmembers that make big changes in the city. They're all well within the city manager's authority. As long as we're not doing anything illegal and I'm not supersitting the city manager's authority, I really feel like this is exactly what our job is. This is what we were elected to do. Adding an equity clause that's open-ended based off of Mrs., you know, sorry, I didn't mean to call her Mrs. Councilmember Contreras', she's not married, so she can't be Mrs. Councilwoman Contreras's motion, I don't think that lets our voters down. This isn't a point of contention. I don't think it's a political, you know, fight per se. I think that this is the most responsible thing regardless of what our partisanship is to protect the city of Vista. So I am saying that yes, I'm going to agree with the staff's recommendation. I'm going to trust the city manager that we, although we didn't personally hire him, we allow him to keep working for us because we trust him at any point in time. He's an at-will employee of the city council. He could, you know, whatever. Sorry, didn't mean to say that. But the truth is, he's not going to do something that's going to jeopardize his job. He's not going to do something that's going to make you horribly angry or whatever. And frankly, it's not illegal. Our attorney says he's not wrong. He knows the law. He's a city attorney, and I think this is within the purvey of the council to approve a motion such as this. And that in the end, based off of my conversations with even the dispensary owners in the area and other cultivators, this is a policy that is necessary to be included in this particular business due to the equity issues that were spoken of previously. And I think I'm going to be okay with it. Unfortunately, I don't know that this will be an idea that we're going to agree on, but I don't feel like this is creating backdoor policies. We are specifically saying we are putting an equity clause in our cannabis cultivation. Our city manager will verify with us as a council prior to putting it in and make sure that the majority of the council. So it's still going to be, you know, the will of the people and the will of their elected officials. We're just not going to sit up here and debate for hours and hours about what we, what the best protected class is for you and them and me and whatever, because I'm sure we disagree. But together, I feel like we can come up with it with the city manager, and he's going to implement it together. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that it's not like he's going to wake up one day and put a policy in that none of us have seen. We're all going to see it. We're all going to agree on it. If we don't all agree on it, you'll be sure that the majority agrees on it, even if you are in the minority. So I know there was a motion in a second. I assume there's additional speakers that we'll talk about. Last question before our speakers come forward, which I forgot about. This auditing process, $19,967, that's the cost of an audit for one of these businesses. It's an extensive cost. What's this based off of, Mr. Conley?
That's actually for our cannabis management program, so includes staff time to work with the businesses, but primarily it's also the financial audit and the regulatory inspections that we do with HDL.
So I remember we initially had a very, very high inspection fee and audit fee on our dispensaries when we first started, and we had to drop it because we over-anticipated what those costs are. Is this in line with the actual hard costs and staff time?
Yes, this is the revised cost based on actual time.
Okay. And that's what I want to make sure our dispensary owners know as well, is we're not trying to gouge them. This is actual staff time. We're not allowed to overcharge for licenses and audits and inspections. So this $19,000 fee, although it looks like a lot, it is an in-depth audit like Councilmember Contreras was asking for, and it is within our policy. So that's where I'm at. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for the floor.
Thank you, Councilman Green. And I just want to reiterate that my objection here is on process alone. There is no element of partisanship. I cannot oppose that which I do not have specificity on. I cannot oppose a policy which I have not seen. So I want to ask the city attorney, is your contention at this time that the city can make governing policy by the staff, having serial meetings with the council members to ensure the majority approval without action before the public?
No, that would be a Brown Act violation.
I think it would.
But what I, what, the reason I have opined the way I have is the way Section 5.97080B is written. It says, "The city manager shall establish the schedule, rules, and procedures for the submitted applications." Because of the inclusion of the word "rules," it allows him to include the equity component, and it would be by direction of this council of what the equity component would be. If the word "rules" wasn't in there, I don't think there would have been enough, you know, in this.
And do you feel that the council has provided you with sufficient direction to create a specific policy without coming back to the individual members of the council to approve it on a serial basis?
That would probably be a question for the city manager because it's directed to the city manager to create the rule.
Please.
I do think I can work with the council and not violate the Brown Act to be able to come up with something that works for the majority. I would say that it probably would be cleaner, you know, if I'm just being forthright, to have this body make that decision, but I'm confident based on your trust in me or the way we work together that we could do that.
We have two more speakers from the public. Mr. Phil Church.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council. It's my opinion that procedurally this item has moved forward on the agenda as published and that the motion has been made and seconded and discussion has occurred and that routinely our city manager and staff are asked to come back with further details after a motion and a second on an item has been voted. I move that someone call for a vote without objection.
Thank you. Natalie Perez.
I believe in equality for all, not because I'm Brown. No, we need to stop with the mentality of victimhood because this is exactly what divides us all as human beings. We are humans. We bleed the same blood, breathe the same air, and we are talking about specifically the cannabis problem until it got too political. Because what I don't approve is the ignorance as in people notice how I say "people," not people of privilege or people of color or, as they would say, white people nowadays. But because of activists who act like they speak for everyone, I use logic, not my feelings. My father has taught me to be victorious, be victorious with your voice, never be a victim. I carry myself because you work for it, not for the media. We need to show teens how to be better, not victims, not because of equity or privilege. I want the best, not excuses. I agree with Mr. Patrick for the logic and common sense rules and the cost of and effects. I am no activist or a fighter, but I at least understand reality versus illusion. But hey, what would I know, right? I believe in protecting kids but don't consider weed as the illegal drug due to the fact on how the media loves to perpetrate it. It is something that has been antagonized for many years, but nobody talks about the overdoses of over-the-counter medicines or even random suicides that goes on. We need to start using this change with our actions, not our words, and this is exactly why I vote no for the Prop 65 as well.
Thank you very much. I've said my piece. I'm, after the council has all had their say, I'm ready to proceed to a vote. Under the rules of the council that were duly adopted, I do at this time direct the city manager to agendize at the next city meeting a formal council discussion on the policy that you will create. So, you know, denying me a vote has accomplished nothing because we're going to have a discussion, and I anticipate a motion in a second on that, and we'll have an opportunity to vote. And the city will have a transparent government as long as I'm on this council, and they will have an opportunity to participate in discussion. It will not happen behind closed doors. It will happen in the full light of day, and the community will be able to come and speak on all those items, and they will be able to hear exactly what it is, I believe. And if they don't like it, they can vote me out, and if they like it, they can vote me back in. That's fine. That's the commitment I made to the community when I stood for election, is to stand up and be accountable. So with that, Corina, Councilmember Contreras, please.
Thank you. I appreciate the robust discussion. This is probably the longest we've ever discussed social equity ever in the history of Vista, and it's a long time coming. As you see, people have a lot of opinions. Some of us have a lot less experience with the hardships of being a minority. However, you know, I, I just don't believe it's anybody's job up here to mansplain what we think our personal job is. And also, I will say that there is no denying anybody a vote because you still have the ability to vote yes, abstain, or vote no. And you have, anybody on this council has the ability to bring anything up as a discussion or presentation on any agenda, so it is a little bit of Kabuki theater. It is a little bit unnecessary, and I will say that the reason that I decided to run for office after many people told me, hey, you should run for office, I was like, no, was because I was in this council chamber and someone up here told me that I had a responsibility to teach my community how to respect the sheriffs, and when they tell you to put your hands up, to put your hands up. When we were talking about Jonathan Cornell and Sergio Wick, who were killed by the same deputy, and they were unarmed, and Sergio had 22 gunshot wounds, and because you said that to me, Deputy Mayor, I decided to run, and I won. So I definitely have the authority to make this decision, and as the ordinance stands, it is 100% legal for the city manager to make the rules. But at the end of the day, you're still going to bring this back, so we don't have to go there and say that you were denied a vote because you are most definitely not denied a vote. So I just want to make sure that we are being factual up here because the people do deserve that. And trying to paint this as some kind of obscure backdoor room, backroom conversation is just not, that's not what it is. I mean, we've been discussing this item in the public for a very long time at this point. The state of California, other cities have the framework, which I understand that the city attorney and the city manager and our city clerk can go by that framework, and there's a legal justification for that. I am not a lawyer, so I'm never going to pretend to be one up here. I'm never going to just give leading questions. So I, I think that there's been sufficient conversation, to say the least, on this topic, and I am ready to move forward with the vote. Thank you, because we have a lot of business still to do.
Madam Mayor, before we proceed to the vote, did you have anything else? Are you ready for a vote?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, please call roll.
It looks like our voting system is down again, so if we could do a verbal vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No, I'm opposed, no.
Wait. Mayor, would you please repeat your vote?
Ritter, no.
So that passes 3-2 with Franklin and Ritter voting no.
Is that required to come back because it's 3-2?
No, it's not required to come back, but it won't go into, that's immediately.
The second reading doesn't have to come before the council?
You don't have to. You get rest.
Sorry, it will come back as a second. It will need to come back as a second, sorry. Yes, as, yes.
And will it need to be voted on again by the council?
Yes.
Very good. We'll have multiple opportunities to discuss this item in detail and hopefully at that time have some specificity from the city manager and the city attorney about what the policy that is going to be. Okay, moving on, we are done with our public hearings, and we are ready for our discussion items. D1, the first discussion item, is regarding amendments to the Vista Municipal Code, Chapter 8 dot 12, regarding smoking in unenclosed dining areas. City Clerk Kathy Valdez will provide the staff report.
Thank you. At the May 10, 2022 city council meeting, staff received direction to bring back for further discussion and ordinance amending Chapter 8.12, Smoking in Public Places, to Include Outdoor Dining Areas. Staff has drafted amendments to the chapter which prohibits smoking within an unenclosed dining area of an eating establishment, prohibits smoking within 20 feet from any said unenclosed dining area, and requires no smoking signs at each entrance to the unenclosed dining area. An eating establishment is defined as a coffee shop, cafeteria, shortstop cafe, luncheonette, sandwich shop, soda fountain, ice cream parlor, restaurant, or similar establishment serving food to the public. This definition does not include bar establishments principally devoted to serving alcoholic beverages and in which serving food is incidental to the consumption of alcoholic beverages. This will be determined by the type of ABC license the establishment holds or, in cases where the licensee is not deemed an eating establishment, by Vista Development Code, Section 18.02.125, which defines a bar as an establishment in which sales of alcoholic beverages make up 25% or more of gross sales. This definition will generally exclude most breweries and bars. That completes my report. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We have a large number of speakers, so we'll proceed to hear from the public. First is, I believe, is it Jenna or Gemma Knutson? Followed by, if you would come and take a position ready to speak, Corina Escovell and Carolina Portales.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. My name is Gina Knutson. I'm a program manager at Vista Community Clinic, and I'm also a American Cancer Society Action Cancer Network volunteer. Action Cancer Network volunteer. First, I want to congratulate the city for moving forward with smoke-free outdoor dining. In San Diego County, 14 cities have already adopted smoke-free outdoor dining policies. Vista would be the last city in North County to adopt smoke-free outdoor dining, as such policies are nothing new in our region, with the first one being adopted about 10 years ago in Carlsbad in 2012. We have received 24 letters of support from businesses with voluntary smoke-free patio policies. We will provide education and signage to these businesses if a policy is adopted. We will have about $2,000 from the county of San Diego that will, they'll provide us that money for the signage, so you guys know the dollar amount. This past month, I did assessments in Carlsbad, Oceanside, and San Marcos for compliance with their smoke-free outdoor dining ordinances. I did not assess Encinitas or Escondida. I specifically focused on breweries, brewpubs, wineries, distilleries, and bars. What I found was a very high level of compliance and support for the policy with the exception of some bars in Oceanside. I did this as these cities do include patios that serve food and drink in their policy. Best practices are to have a citywide policy so there's no confusion as to which businesses with patios allow smoking on patios in which do not, as it's much easier to educate the public. Then I visited all the breweries, brewpubs, wineries, and distilleries in Vista, but not the bars. Many of these businesses already adopted voluntary smoke-free policies. Many have outdoor dining patios, and this includes temporary patios due to COVID. Here are the results. There are 16 breweries with patios. 11 have a voluntary smoke-free policy. Some even have signs. 15 of the 16 breweries either have a food vendor in the parking lot, a food truck schedule on their website, or food truck schedule posted inside the business, or an onsite kitchen. There are two brewpubs, one is smoke-free. There is one distillery, and it's smoke-free. There's no wineries with patios except for by appointment only in businesses that are located at private residences. I did not assess the bars. Two of these businesses signed a letter of support. Overall, 65% have a smoke-free policy. There's lots of evidence of smoking in the parking lots away from the patios. I also observed kids, families, and pets during my assessments. Please consider including these types of businesses in the smoke-free policy. Overall, with this said, we're very happy with what the policy that is being proposed today. Thank you.
Next is Karina Esquivel, followed by Carolina Portales, followed by John Badorf.
Sorry, I'm a little short. Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Karina Esquivel, and I am the facilitator of Stay Club. Stay Club stands for Spreading Tobacco Awareness Youth Club. We are the only youth tobacco advocacy club in the city of Vista, and we are based out of Vista High School. Unfortunately, the youth of our club were unable to make it tonight, but I am here today to represent Stay Club and all of our youth leaders who work every day to advocate for a smoke-free community. You may remember one of our youth leaders, Yael, sharing his story on the May 10 city council meeting. His story was on how secondhand smoke has negatively affected his health. We know that youth being exposed to tobacco products at a young age are more likely to use these type of products. In fact, 90% of tobacco users started using these products before the age of 18. We all want to enjoy a nice dinner out with our family and friends without having to breathe in these toxic chemicals. Thank you for considering the health of our community by discussing a smoke-free outdoor dining in the city of Vista, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Carolina Portales, followed by John Badorf, followed by Suzanne Hume. Is Carolina here? Okay, John Badorf, followed by Suzanne Hume, followed by Youssef Miller.
Thank you much, city council. My name is John Badorf, CleanEarthForKids.org. Just want to first thank you for bringing this ordinance forward and stopping smoking in outdoor dining. I would also ask you to look at an ordinance to not allow smoking or vaping of any kind in multi-unit housing. This has already been done in over 70 cities and counties in California. Alameda County just did it. We have their ordinance and other examples on our no smoking page of our website, CleanEarthForKids.org. As has been discussed here before, secondhand smoke is a toxic air contaminant linked to cancer, lung infections, bronchitis, asthma, and many other health issues. Up to 65% of the air in a multi-unit home can come from other units. Home is the main place kids are exposed to secondhand smoke. Two out of every five children and seven out of every 10 black children are exposed to secondhand smoke. According to the CDC, there is no safe level exposure to secondhand smoke. There is also thirdhand smoke, which is the chemical residue left on clothes, furniture, and any surface exposed to smoking. Washing does not remove these chemicals or their health risks. These toxic chemicals are linked to everything from liver disease, type 2 diabetes, and can even harm the brain development in children. So please look at an ordinance to, as other cities have done, to stop smoking in multi-unit housing. I would also ask you to look at banning the sale of all flavored tobacco, cannabis, vapes, and e-cigarettes. As has been discussed many times, smoking is smoking, and it is very, very bad for you, a single. And there's also the fact that cigarette butts should also be banned as far as your single plastic policy as well. A single cigarette butt can contain up to 60 known carcinogens, including arsenic, formaldehyde, chromium, and lead. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Suzanne Hume, followed by Youssef Miller, and followed by Naim Miller.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Suzanne Hume, Clean Earth for Kids. So tonight was pretty hard for me, and this is why. I have a lung condition, as you may know, because I was exposed to pesticides unwillingly. At home, I was a teacher. Anyway, so tonight's a little tough. I'm going to do my best. Okay, so how do I spend my days? I spend my days looking at research about the harms of second and thirdhand smoke, about pesticides, about drugs on kids. So I do this seven days a week. I do. I take no salary. The conversations tonight were really hard for me to take because I 100% understand the implications on our kids. There was a comment made earlier that if we don't have complaints, that it equates to no harm from the 11 dispensaries. I sat here as long as I could. Of course, we support smoke-free dining. Children, babies, let me clarify, well, children as well, but I was going to say babies exposed to secondhand smoke when their moms are pregnant and after, they don't do very well. We have a ton of research, a ton. If you've been to our website, Clean Earth for Kids, Alicia was here who was going to speak. She's also with NAACP, a youth, did beautiful videos. It's tragic. It is tragic. What happens to babies, SIDS, and babies are most vulnerable in their six, the first six days after they're born. So all this talk about smoke and having more drugs in Vista, it's hard for me because I understand the consequences. When it comes out that Delta 8, because we know Delta 9 is Prop 65, when it comes out that Delta 8 in marijuana, when you see that, I want you to think about everything that you said tonight. So yes, of course, we support this, and I would urge the council to do more research. Thank you.
Thank you. Youssef Miller, followed by Naim Miller.
Youssef Miller, NAACP, Clean Earth for Kids. Thank you for bringing this ordinance or this position forward to ban outdoor smoking in dining facilities. A lot of research on whether smoking has to do with internal cancer, colon cancer, intestinal cancer, as people are smoking. And we know secondhand smoke is just as bad, just as deadly. So even if I'm not the one smoking while eating, I'm also affected, and my children are affected, by the secondhand smoke while eating, which increases the risk of intestinal cancer and colon cancer. So I appreciate this ordinance. It's not new, as you heard before. It's spread out throughout North County, and hopefully Vista is on board as well. It is a public safety issue, and it's just, it's just hard to eat while somebody is smoking with you anyway. That's just a personal thing I just wanted to say, since I have some green time to speak on that. But back to the research, you can look up with the cancer society, you can look up with intestinal cancer societies, you can look up these colon societies and find out that smoking while eating and secondhand smoke while eating now has been determined to increase the rate of colon cancer. Thank you.
Thank you. Naim Miller?
Good evening. I support the smoke-free outdoor dining ordinance in Vista. We all need clean air to breathe. Secondhand and thirdhand smoke are toxic. There is no safe level of secondhand smoke. There are also almost 70 chemicals in secondhand smoke that can cause cancer. Like John said, there are thirdhand smoke, which is the chemical residue left on clothes, furniture, and any surface exposed to smoking. That is the toxic residue from smoking that is left on surfaces and even on dust. It is also on the hairs and skins of smokers. Washing does not remove these chemicals or their health risks. Studies show that hand washing drops the toxic levels of the hands, but they are back 40 to 60 minutes later. So even if someone doesn't smoke around their kids, they are still exposed to them, to toxic chemicals that can interfere with brain development, causing things like ADHD. Thirdhand smoke can also cause liver disease, cancer, and type 2 diabetes. It can also make asthma worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, and thank you to the public, for everybody who came today, for the youth who really just elevated this as a very important issue, and gave us a great presentation, did incredible outreach to our businesses, and really did the job of the council and the city for us. So that way, we could be in a position today to adopt a new ordinance. I will say that this, I feel like, is a step in the right direction. I don't believe it's enough, but it's a step in the right direction, which is why I'm going to support it. I do support a citywide outdoor policy when it comes to being smoke-free, but I don't think we're there yet. It doesn't seem like we're there yet as a council. Maybe in the future. The good thing is that we always have the ability to bring something back and review it, so nothing is ever set in stone. And perhaps in the future, with enough of community participation, this is something that we can take up again and plug up any loopholes that the community might think is in it, and that I believe is in it. But it's a good first start, and if anything, it could be considered like a pilot program, right? We'll see how it works, and we can always make it better. But again, I just really want to thank Vista Community Clinic and Clean Earth for Kids, and everybody, the NAACP for their involvement in bringing our community together and encouraging civic engagement, and not even that, basically helping us create a policy. So I hope that everybody that was involved in this sees the benefit of coming to a council meeting, because all too often, it doesn't look like this. It looks pretty empty. So please don't let this be the last council meeting that you come to. I know sometimes they can be boring, and they can be long, but the conversation and the discussions that we have are really important. And as you see, you can come up and you can put your comment card in, you know, just give us a few words. And if it's not on the agenda, you can do that during oral communications at the end. So just throwing a plug out there for more participation and civic engagement. But with that said, I want to definitely hear from my colleagues, but I'm just going to move forward with accepting, making a motion to accept staff's recommendation. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Green.
Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Contreras, for all your work on this. I remember you packed out my community room with the Vista Community Clinic, and, you know, all the other organizations that came in there. We had some signs, they had some data. I mean, you guys really did a good amount of work. And truth is, if you guys don't come in and be advocates for this, stuff like this doesn't happen. I know we had a difference of opinion on some issues within this ordinance, but that's why I think it's so important to have a diverse council up here that looks out for a lot of different issues, is that in the end, we didn't all get what we wanted, but we did get something that's going to make a huge difference, and it's going to make an impact. And without your guys' help and support and, you know, work and collaboration with Councilmember Contreras, this wouldn't have got here. So thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Thank you for staying here till 8:24 until the item came up. I didn't know it was going to take this long to get to it, but I appreciate it. And I really think that at this point, where we're at, that this is a fantastic ordinance, and it protects the businesses that we were worried about needing protected, but it also protects our citizens and puts an extra layer on top of our outdoor smoking ordinance that we didn't have before. And again, that wouldn't happen without public advocacy. So thank you so much for that. I'm going to just turn it over to Councilmember Melendez to finish up the seconding.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for showing up, and Councilmember Contreras for, you know, bringing this forward. And, you know, it really is amazing what we can do, right? And in our democratic processes, to not only elect someone to represent the people of the community, but then be able to see that come to fruition and start to see real material, tangible improvements to our community. So I'm definitely in support of this. I think it's good for public health. You know, I think that we live in a very free society where people can make choices and do things that they would like, to a large extent. But when those choices affect other people, other patrons, then we really have to consider, you know, what is our responsibility as leaders for the public good? So I, you know, appreciate everybody's criticisms. That's something that I think is very valuable as a public official, to be able to sit up here and receive criticism from the people that have elected us, or anyone who had, you know, even if you didn't elect me, or, right, or even if you're, right, it doesn't matter. It's all really valuable because it continues the arc of justice to go forward and allows us to build a more perfect union. So I love seeing things like this come to fruition in our city during my short time here as I'm more newly elected. But I do support this, and I'll go ahead and second the motion to approve this ordinance and, you know, take staff's recommendations so that we can see an improvement potentially to our public health, and everybody feels a little bit more secure with the air that they breathe. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, did you want to be recognized on this issue?
Sure, I will. I just, I'm aware that, like, if there's a restaurant next door that has a no smoking, and there's a patio where somebody's eating, or, you know, they're smoking on the patio next door, and the smoke goes next door, or people are smoking close by it, you know, it's not pleasant. So I think this will be, I think this would be a good ordinance. And I think there's a lot of, actually, restaurants already, I think we got a list of them, that already have the policy of no smoking on their patio area. So I don't, you know, it's not going to be a big change to too many, I don't think. So I would be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Looks like we'll be doing it orally again.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor Ritter?
Aye.
Bass is 5-0. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. D2 is our next item, the report on our general plan update. Community Development Director John Connolly will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council. We selected a consultant to update our general plan in March of this year. We selected Rick Engineering and Planning. Michael Wrestler, our principal planner, is going to be the project manager. Michael Wrestler, our principal planner, is going to be the project manager for the planning department, and we have a team of consultants that's representing Rick, um, that's here tonight to present on the general plan. So we just wanted to give you a little overview of what we're going to be doing and take comments from the council. So I'm here to introduce Brooke Peterson, who's the lead consultant with Rick Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, council members. Um, I am pleased to be with you. Um, as Mr. Connolly introduced, I'm Brooke Peterson. I'm the Director of Planning and Design at Rick Engineering. We are a longtime legacy engineering firm in San Diego, and we're just excited to be, uh, joining the effort to lead the general plan update. Um, so I just want to introduce the consultant team briefly. Um, I will serve as principal in charge of the project and project manager. We have, um, my excellent right hand, Julia Hill, here tonight. She'll be my assistant project manager, senior planner. Um, Carrie Fernandez with DUDAC will serve as the environmental task lead. Will be preparing, um, an environmental impact report, and she'll lead that effort. Brian Mooney, um, a longtime, uh, experienced planner with over 40 years of experience, will just serve as a strategic advisor. We have Monique Chen with CRA Associates, leading the mobility transportation efforts. Diego Velasco, uh, will be leading, um, the urban design aspects of the effort and also supporting our public outreach programming. And then last but not least, Gary London with London Motor will really be providing his insight on market analysis and economics to make sure that the policies, land use plan, everything contained in the general plan update is really, uh, based and grounded, um, in market realities. So with that, I just want to, um, start with a brief introduction of general plan, provide just a little foundation on the process. I will kind of step through the process that we're going to be, um, carrying forward. But really quickly, general plan, um, your general plan is mandated by state law. It really serves as your blueprint, um, on how you as a city are going to grow and move forward into the future. It's a very comprehensive document. I'm going to go through a couple of, uh, slides on the topics that are included. Um, and it's long-term. It looks 20, 30 years into the future. It provides guidance and prioritizes, um, and organizes, directs, and directs the land use decisions and development patterns that will occur in the city over the coming years. Um, as I mentioned, the general plan contains specific topics. Um, there are seven required topic elements required by state law. And then, uh, there are also, state law allows for optional elements, um, uh, by each agency pertaining to their, uh, local issues and priorities. Uh, there is a significant amount of background analysis that goes into the general plan. Uh, as I mentioned, it has a long-term horizon. Your la, your current general plan was last adopted 2012 and has a 2030 horizon year. Um, and then the housing element, which is one of those required elements, is updated more often. So here's just a list of state mandated elements to, um, provide an overview of the topics required to be addressed in the general plan. Uh, Vista's current general plan reflects all of those elements, um, in really a similar organization. And then I also have, uh, as you probably know, healthy Vista elements, which really prioritizes the health, um, of your community. So just, um, to look at the overarching project goals, um, we envision the general plan update to really build off the strong policy framework of the current 2030 plan. It's not meant to be a wholesale throwout of the 2030 plan, but really a targeted, um, approach to updating goals, policy, incorporating, um, recent legislation and guidance from the Office of Planning and Research, um, to bring it up to date. Um, a couple of those key updates are related to safety. There's a lot more requirements governing fire risk. Um, there'll be a comprehensive fire risk assessment. There's a lot more required as far as, um, environmental justice, and we will be weaving additional environmental justice throughout the plan. And, um, additional, uh, requirements on health, although the city's, uh, healthy Vista element really largely already covers that. We see a need also for the general plan to go beyond, um, what we would just sort of term good planning principles of smart growth and land use, and really identify creative ways to balance the tension between Vista's past and present as a more, um, suburban community and effectively facilitate the evolution of its pattern and its character, um, to a more urbanized city through market-based and design-oriented and community consensus-oriented approaches. And lastly, the plan needs to address the diversity of Vista, its demographics, populations, neighborhoods, its cultures, its development patterns, geographic areas, and provide the systems, uh, that will create greater access and opportunity, whether it be to housing, jobs, employment, health, or services. Um, in order to do that in part, um, it will be about creating a powerful tool. Um, general plans can sometimes be just overarching, high-level policy documents that sit. Um, but we want to create a really working, a really workable plan and a working plan that adopts a strong yet flexible policy base, but also, um, serves as a work and document that will build from the economic, economic development strategy and then feed into your capital programming and the development review process so that it's a much more valuable, um, implementation-oriented tool. In order to achieve the goals I covered, we envision that there are some critical issues that will be, um, need to be addressed, uh, as I mentioned, to prepare Vista for the future while holding on to its hair, history and defining character. Um, the overarching challenge in achieving this vision will be to, um, look at going the next level, to densify along transportation corridors, and then looking beyond those transportation corridors for some of those aging or underutilized areas of the city, um, to bring greater density and greater development, um, to, um, to accommodate the growing population. We see a big challenge will also be to, um, go beyond, like I mentioned, the good planning principles and, uh, planning level policy, but to modernize and bring, uh, market-based land use, design, and supporting infrastructure strategies to truly drive, guide, and track growth and development. It'll be about establishing, um, design standards that are, uh, based and ground-truthed on market realities and trends. And then last but not least, it'll be very important to garner the community, uh, buy-in on our strategies. Just a couple key elements, um, of our approach to achieve this, as I've, um, been speaking to, economics and really bringing a market-based approach will be critical. We'll be striving to really define the right mix of uses, uh, density and design across the different areas of the city, building in flexibility, yet providing assurances of quality of development. We want to really create, um, uh, land use designations and policies that allow for technological advancement, as well as, um, as well as even environmental changes, and just allow it to be something that, in, uh, adapt with the city based on market, environmental, technology, whatever it is, help it to be adaptable. Um, and we will be providing and conducting a really comprehensive infrastructure analysis to support all of the land use, uh, changes and policies that will go into the general plan update. And last, but I'll say most importantly, we do have a very comprehensive public outreach program, um, planned in order to really truly garner, um, community input and to, uh, for them to really truly be able to participate all the way through the process. Um, we'll be doing, uh, project branding. We will have a comprehensive website. Um, and, and I'll add that website will not be just a sort of information-only place. Uh, it will be an actual kind of online virtual town hall to really support conversation, input, feedback, um, all the way through the process. We will have a technical advisory committee. Um, the composition of that will be developed with staff. And then we have a comprehensive in-person, uh, um, programming planned where we'll have three different series. As we go through kind of the three main, uh, phases of the project, we'll do comprehensive workshop series through each quadrant of the city in order to really try and effectively reach, um, all your citizens. And then, uh, together with that, we'll be supporting the in-person kind of boots-on-the-ground, uh, strategies with, uh, as I mentioned, maximizing our virtual and online. And we really believe that that'll be important to broadening the reach. Not everyone can attend an in-person meeting, and we want to try and garner and hear, um, from everyone, whether it be in person or from their homes. So I have up here also hard copy noticing we'll be doing, like I said, both hard copy and virtual reach-outs in order to really have as broad of a reach as possible. So just really quick on just the overall process and timing, we have just launched the project. Um, we'll be spending the next few months, summer and into fall, doing a real thorough existing conditions analysis, uh, starting a market analysis. We'll also be preparing the detail of the public outreach plan. We'll then, uh, go out and really fully launch this with the public in the fall. We'll spend next, the first half of next year, developing, uh, through conversation with the public, developing a series of land use alternatives and looking at new updated policy. Uh, the back half of 2023 will then be the, uh, selecting a preferred land use plan. And then in 2024 will be the preparation of the program environmental impact report, um, and our conversations with you and the planning commission at adoption hearings. So with that, I want to thank you for listening and open it up for your questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, we don't have any public speakers on this item, so we'll move to the council. Uh, Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, I am one of the newer council members. Uh, but regardless, I, I think that this has been a long time since we had a general plan update, right? So it's a 20-year plan. That's a big, you know, commitment looking forward into the future. And, um, you know, the, the best that I can do coming into this discussion is to provide, um, my experience, my life experience, having grown up here in Vista, um, my dedication to the community that I represent, um, and then just, uh, critical thinking and an ability to, um, ask thoughtful questions and be able to look at our plan as it develops from different angles. So this is the very beginning of the process. Um, I want to start off with, um, just saying I'm really excited about what we get to create together. Um, but I also want to make sure that certain, uh, elements are included in the approach that I think would behoove the community. So I really do appreciate, um, you know, all of the approaches that you were able to offer, right, and your methodology, um, right, including having a market-driven approach, um, uh, building in flexibility, right, being adaptive for new technology. Uh, but since we've been having such a robust conversation about equity tonight, I think it's going to be really important for us to include equity as one of our key approaches for our general plan update. Um, and, you know, that's because equity and historical inequities do affect every single, um, mandated element that is part of the general plan structure, right? From land use managed by indigenous people until colonization. Um, so that's right, a historical reality that current public officials of this land have to take into consideration. Uh, and in addition, housing, right, and zoning. Um, I would highly recommend any of my colleagues to read The Color of Law, uh, by Robert Rothstein. It's a great book about, um, the historical legal precedent of how the United States government and multiple municipalities creating, uh, land use policies and zoning that had, you know, devastating outcomes and, um, you know, racist intentions behind them. So, uh, that's, you know, to just give a couple of examples as to why we should be including equity as one of our key approaches as we move forward with the long process and the community-oriented process of, um, creating an updated general plan. Um, outside of that, you know, we're at the beginning of it. There's not too much more for me to critique or to add feedback to. I, uh, think that this is going to be a really sound endeavor. Um, I appreciate, um, your professionalism and your organization, um, taking on this role. And I hope that, um, you know, together as a body, we're able to develop a really beautiful plan for Vista for the next 20 years. So thank you for being here, and hopefully next time we get people coming out and giving public comment and we get more participation. I'll make sure to do my part in, in garnering that for us. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Contreras.
I've been looking forward to this for a long time because we always talk about our general plan and how it needs to be updated, and then we get all these, you know, zone flips in front of us. So, um, a lot of zone flipping gymnastics, gymnastics that happens sometimes. Uh, so this is great to be able to update a document that, um, has a little bit of age on it, uh, and bring it into the 21st century, looking at best practices and ways to, um, grow our city, uh, in a very, uh, dynamic, holistic, and resilient way. Um, so I really appreciate, uh, from my coworkers, uh, and everybody who, uh, takes part in updating, uh, the general plan. And I will say, so when we're looking at densifying, uh, increasing the density along transportation corridors, uh, you know, I imagine a transportation corridor being something like North Santa Fe. Um, I think it, it is really important. I, I want to second, uh, Councilmember Melendez in her discussion of equity, uh, as a, a critical component, um, of updating our general plan because, uh, one of the things that we know we have to do is as we, uh, create more density, um, we need to have the infrastructure. And I know that there's going to be a comprehensive in, infrastructure analysis, um, but, you know, a, a big, we have a lot of room, uh, for opportunity and growth in active transportation, right, in our ATP program, um, in, ensuring that, um, you know, we're not just creating more density along transportation corridors, um, for the sake of creating density, but that we are allowing, uh, density in conjunction with infrastructure needs, uh, for active transportation, whether that be people being able to safely walk, being able to safely bike. Uh, and safely, I will say that safely means not frying up in the sun, uh, as you're making your way on a transportation corridor. It's extremely important, uh, that we, uh, increase the equity in our tree canopy, um, and create more shade in areas for people to rest, uh, when they are reducing greenhouse gas emissions for the rest of us. So we need to make sure that we honor those who are utilizing public transit, that are walking, biking, uh, whether they do it for leisure because that's the only way that they have to move about. Um, so I want to make sure that as we do, and we most certainly will have to, uh, become more dense, that that is also a priority, uh, in that we, you know, make sure that we hold developers accountable to these priorities as well. Um, when it comes to outreach, I just want to ask, uh, what, how many languages, uh, will the outreach be?
That hasn't yet been determined. Um, we certainly recognize that there's going to be a variety, but we don't have that exact list defined.
Sure. Okay. Well, I would 100% say that in the city of Vista, I think we, you know, the stat is something like 40% of our residents speak a language other than, uh, English and that the bulk of that would be Spanish. Uh, so that it is incredibly important to have outreach, um, be in English and in Spanish, uh, in that the outreach, uh, is symmetrical, not one language being presented, uh, better than another, right, that it both are symmetrical in the information that they're providing and in the, uh, graphic design, right, so that there's not one that's better quality than the other. Um, that is going to be incredibly important if we do want to have more civic engagement. And we have partners like Vista Community Clinic and Poder Popular, um, that would be fantastic, uh, in making sure that we keep them, um, abreast of what's happening each step of the way, uh, and that there are the proper invites provided to the, these types of org- of the way, and that there are the proper invites provided to these types of organizations in our community, so that they know when they can show up and participate, which includes the outreach being bilingual in English and Spanish, but also the ability to participate, having an interpreter or translator. I understand that that could be more of an additional cost, but it is absolutely necessary that people have the ability to communicate their thoughts, desires, comments, and questions when it comes to updating the general plan.
Councilmember, if I could have Mr. Conley comment on that.
We'll have all of the material in English and Spanish. That was predetermined. We just haven't determined if there were other languages that we were going to provide it in.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and definitely looking at, I don't know if there's a higher high percentage of other languages spoken, but I don't, and do we have like a threshold? Like if there's 1% of the population that speaks Arabic, we're going to have outreach in Arabic. How is that determined?
We're going to look at the demographic information that we got back from the last census, and if there's a high enough percentage of a specific group, then we might consider putting it in more than just the two languages. At this point, that's our plan.
Okay. And do you have an idea of what a high percentage constitutes?
I'm going to guess anything that's like over 5% of the population, we would consider putting it in that language.
Okay. That's all I'm going to say on that for right now. It's a good start. And yeah, I'm just super excited to be part of this process and to see what the community gives us as feedback. And thank you so much. I know that there's a lot of work that's gone into getting to this point, and there's a whole lot more work that's going to be done for us to get to the endpoint. But yeah, thank you so much. And last thing is that I want to ensure that, as the climate crisis continues, that we are really, really looking at what the change in fire hazard can be when we're looking at land designation and rezoning and whatnot, because something that might be high fire hazard today in five years might be extremely high fire hazard. So I think that absolutely needs to be taken into consideration. The more information this council has, as you've seen, we really do crave information, the better we are able to make decisions, or so goes the theory, right? So I definitely want to make sure that we are addressing some of the critical issues that face not only our municipality, but everybody around the globe at this point. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Green.
June 28, 2022, Brooke Peterson, Principal in Charge, Project Manager, Rick Planning. The only reason why I want to say that out loud is in 20 years, when everybody's like, man, who worked so hard on that general plan that you guys keep changing every week? I don't know who did it before, but like in the future, it was Brooke Peterson, Principal in Charge, General Planning, Rick Engineering. I would assume that we would be able to collaborate with you as a council on any specifics that we have and questions. One thing that I want to make sure is addressed in this general plan, and I think a lot of residents would like to make sure that it's addressed, is our aging commercial corridors. We got a lot of vacancy in those corridors. We've had a lot of different suggestions on what it is that we should do with them. Obviously, they're all zoned a certain way right now, and we've actually rezoned some and are talking about rezoning some for housing, because housing is a need, and densification. We're always combated with residents saying, hey, why don't you stick to the general plan? Why are you making amendments to the general plan? When the general plan was made, a couple decades ago, the amount of densification that was needed and the housing needs were a lot different than they are now. So I just want to make sure, retail's a little more dead than it used to be because of online, Amazon, all that. And we have different areas that have specific needs as far as like a grocery or retail or whatever, but we have other areas that have those things that are sitting vacant because there's too much commercial over there that's not being utilized. So make sure that, and I know we're going to have workshops on this, but that's a big thing in Vista, is how can we get our aged-out commercial corridors that people aren't wanting to invest in zoned in such a way that somebody will come and invest in them? And in some cases, we have, there's a Vons that's closing down on the corner of Civic Center Drive in Santa Fe, for example, right now. That's owned by eight to 13 different owners, yet it's zoned commercial. And there's not eight to 13 different restaurants and things that want to go in there. And when a developer comes in, they have a lot of people they got to get all on board. And I think corridors like that, that weren't kind of thought about, like, hey, we might need to have a cohesive plan for this big old shopping center, how can we do our general plan in such a way that in the event they decide to come together, it's a lot easier for the governing body to make changes? Because we can all speculate on what would be the best use for that, but if we really have it in writing with our general plan, it's already clearly defined. It's, hey, this is the highest and best use based off of where we are in 2022. So look at those for us. I think that's a big thing. I'm sure our planning department probably told you, they probably got some calls as far as how those could be repurposed or rezoned. I mean, we got a church going into an old shopping center. I mean, we got some different stuff going on, and I want to be creative with it, but I also want to make sure that the blueprint is cohesive and doesn't adversely affect the character of the community. But we don't want to have a bunch of vacant retail spaces, and we don't want to have a bunch of aged-out commercial corridors that aren't beneficial to the community. So if we could work on that in those areas where it's smart to put densification as far as residential goes in those old previously commercially-zoned corridors, I think that's a good way to go about it, because a lot of those commercial corridors are on high-traffic corridors, high arterial streets that have good access to transit and things. So for me, that's a big deal with the general plan. I think that's something I really want you to concentrate on. Last thing that I'm going to say is I'm a big fan of community engagement. I got elected because I thought there wasn't enough community engagement, and people weren't returning my calls and my emails and my text messages. Now I can't get them to stop calling, texting, emailing, text messaging, which is great. But I did want to make sure, I saw your flow chart here, and I know there's three series of in-person workshops in the different districts as far as the demographics go for our communities here. How many of those workshops, if any, are going to come back to council where we get to engage with citizens while we're on the dais, speaking about what was discussed in those workshops? So like you say, do you come to us after your three workshops and the community's involved, and it's like, you know, engaging discussion per se with, they can come ask us questions and things? Sorry, go ahead. John?
You're not going to get the people that come to the workshops to come to every council meeting?
Of course not. I'm just wondering if we're going to have some workshops where people are allowed to come and...
So the public will be invited to all of the council workshops. Obviously, we will go out into the community and gather some of that information, and then we'll come back and report out to the commission and the council, and those will all be public meetings, so people that participated can come to these, or we can just present to you what they spoke about, and we can get your feedback. But yes, each of the steps of the process involves following up with the commission and the council.
So we're going to end up having five more updates on this as a council between now and 2024, when we implement a policy at minimum?
Probably more than that.
No, 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 no. Let's just say we're going to have five.
Depending on what issues come out of this process.
Okay. I just want to make sure that as a council, we can't attend all of these workshops and things, and I want to make sure we can discuss as a council and also discuss with the citizens face-to-face in council chambers, on the record, to be completely transparent per se. So that's it. Thank you. Thanks for taking this task on. It's going to be done at the end of 2024, which will be a fantastic time to finish this up. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I also look forward to the community's input here. I think we're all concerned about building enough housing for the next generation while also preserving the character and integrity of our neighborhoods, protecting our green spaces. So I look forward to working with you to that end. Madam Mayor, would you like to say anything on this item?
Sure, but my internet is kind of unstable right now. All of a sudden, it just started doing that. But it takes, it's been 10 years, and life changes, and things change so much in 10 years. And so it's time to update everything. So I'm happy to see this happen. It's going to take a long time to get to the new one, but it'll be an interesting process, and it needs to be done.
Thank you very much. And with that, seeing no other discussion, we will move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item D3. Our third discussion item is the Safe Parking Program Request for Proposals. Assistant City Manager Amanda Lee will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is an overview of the draft request for proposal, or RFP, for a safe parking program. In January, the City Council directed staff to review safe parking and return with recommendations at a future City Council meeting. Following the direction, staff visited and met with safe parking providers and researched safe parking options. Staff returned to the City Council in April and received direction to proceed with an RFP allocated up to $250,000 in housing funds to support the program. The draft RFP was developed based on input received from providers, the County of San Diego, and researching successful programs. The scope of services presented in the RFP represents an outline of services the city anticipates the successful proposal will form, which include being a bridge to help people find permanent housing, capacity to provide up to 25 parking spaces, site management, case management, and housing navigation services, restroom facilities and handwashing stations, well-lit grounds, fencing, security, operate seven days a week, coordination with the community to address and mitigate concerns, and track measurable program outcomes, including the number of individuals households assisted, composition and demographics of households, number of parking spaces occupied per night, and linkages to resources and exit outcomes. The precise scope of services will be negotiated between the city and the successful proposal. Proposals will be evaluated based on organizational capacity and experience, general program overview, budget and cost efficiency, and site location and readiness. Following the publishing of the agenda report, staff spoke with safe parking providers and voiced their interest in responding to the RFP and recommended the following edits to strengthen the RFP. Extend the RFP deadline to August 26. Allow for respondents to identify up to five locations, however, only one location will be selected, and allow for a letter of intent versus proof of site control. Based on the recommendation, staff also does recommend the inclusion of those items. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We do have one speaker, and we'll begin with public comments. Followed by Yusef Miller.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here. Cipriano Vargas, resident of Vista. The County of San Diego today approved a 7.3 operating budget. And with that, more investments in mental health, behavioral health, housing for the homeless, and making sure that we tackle this regional issue. We know that the city of Vista can't solve this this year alone, and so I'm urging my colleagues to support this measure. Thank you to Councilmember Kitty Melendez for bringing this conversation and making sure that we're having this discussion, because as we talk to our neighbors and as we see in our community, this is an ongoing need, and if we do nothing, this is only going to get worse. In addition, I'm proud to see that the city has committed some funding for this initiative to move forward. Unlike the RFP for the shelter, where there was no financial commitment from the city for that RFP, I think this is a step in the right direction in making sure that there's both commitment from the city of Vista, but also from potential nonprofits that may consider doing an RFP. So with that, looking forward to the discussion and the conversation that will happen this evening. Thank you.
Did I have to wait to be called? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Yusef Miller, yes, please move forward on the safe parking. It's just incredible. I'm on three housing, fair housing boards throughout the county, and homelessness is skyrocketing. A lot of these people are living in their vehicles, and it's not only individuals, it's also families living in these vehicles. There's also kids going to school from vehicles, and they need a place, a safe place to stay. And what I was really impressed with your talk here is, as you mentioned, sanitation, handwashing, and restrooms. This becomes a problem when this natural function happens, and they're so far away from facilities, and then the victim of not having facilities is blamed for this unsanitary condition. So if we can mitigate that while we provide wraparound services, a lot of people who are in these conditions have mental health issues that are going on, and they need these wraparound services, drug addiction, that they also need these wraparound services. And also, like you said before, thank you again, I can't thank you enough, just exit plans, so that this is a temporary fix. It's just a Band-Aid on a real larger problem. So hopefully, we can get this safe parking request and proposal through with the associated wraparound services to make this a temporary but effective plan.
Thank you very much. Jim Regenbach, followed by Suzanne Hume.
Thank you, Jim Regenbach, Vista resident. I just wanted to offer my support for the safe parking. It almost makes too much sense, so please consider it seriously. And then I like Mr. Miller's point about that it's a Band-Aid, so just keep your focus on housing too. Thanks.
Suzanne Hume.
Hi, and thank you, Suzanne Hume, Clean Earth for Kids. Yes, absolutely echo the comments of Yusef Miller and that we're made of Cipriano Vargas. This is so vital, and the sanitation is so important. And we do have families and kids living in cars. What can we do to help? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to jump in first with some thoughts. I was definitely struck when I participated in the point-in-time count with the Regional Task Force for the Homeless, at the fact that there are quite a few people that are parking close to where we are now, who are living in their cars. And that's, until, we hadn't done the point-in-time count for several years, but I was struck by the current number of people that are living in automobiles. And I do think that there is some logic. I visited the Jewish Family Services Site in Encinitas. It was clean. It was orderly. It did provide the city an opportunity to offer social services, shelter, mental health services, and other case services to those who were living in their cars. So I'm looking forward to seeing the responses that we get to the RFP. Councilman Joe Green.
First time button. Thank you so much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation. I can't thank you enough either, Assistant City Manager Amanda Lee. You are fantastic. I will say, number one, thank you to Councilmember Melendez. This was one of the first things she brought forward, and I was skeptical, right? Come on. I didn't know what it was. And like everything else in politics, until you get the information and really research it, you shouldn't form an opinion. And I'm the type of guy that likes to listen. Listening is the bridge that love travels on, and I can't love people unless I listen to them. And listening to Councilmember Melendez and kind of her feelings on it and her experience in social work really kind of opened up my eyes to like, all right, let's give this a try. Maybe I don't know. But I initially thought this, like a lot of Vistans, like people are just going to show up and park in parking lots, and the ones that can't park here are going to go park in your neighborhood, and they're going to take things. And, you know, I mean, it was just this big fear mongering that I feel like came out of this program, when in reality, like Deputy Mayor Franklin said, Jewish Family Services really has a great system down that is effective, and it is helping our unsheltered residents that are living in their cars. Just because you're in your car doesn't mean that you're sheltered. I don't know if any of you had to sleep in a car overnight or for a week with your mom and your brother and your sister or anything like that, but it's not cool, especially if it's a two-door hatchback. Let me tell you about it. So knowing that you have a safe parking lot to sleep in overnight, where there's going to be social services that can possibly help those people get into some type of temporary housing or even permanent supportive housing, like we discussed up here. I also think having a funding mechanism is important, which we definitely do for this. I do want to make a comment, though, about the previous RFP that we had out. I really felt like it was tough to have a funding mechanism behind it, simply because the RFP was so inclusive. We're going to build a shelter. We're going to do safe parking. We're going to do showers. We're going to feed. It was a lot of things kind of included in one RFP. And I feel like, as a council, making this decision to break this RFP down into different parts that can specifically target areas that are in the most need, even though it's a Band-Aid in some cases, is still... though it's a Band-Aid in some cases, is still super important, because if we left that whole RFP out there, even if we said we were gonna give 250,000 bucks for funding, that's a $10 million project or something for everything we wanted to do with the rooms and the safe parking and things. So, you know, we have an RFP out for the shelter, I'm assuming we're gonna have one that we'll actually be able to release pretty soon, and this is something that's gonna be separate from that. You know, the shelter requests that we all kind of, you know, put together, hopefully will be very well received, and we get some good RFPs on it. But what I'm hoping is that, you know, not only Jewish Family Services, but anybody that has taken notes from them on how to run this safe parking program, give us some real options that can really help Vistaans, and give us some locations. I like the idea of five different locations. There's a lot of NIMBYs out there. We know the NIMBYs, not in my backyard, baby. So we need to know where you're gonna put it, because, again, it has to be palatable to the community to some extent, and we need to make sure as a council that we represent all of our constituents properly. So I appreciate you saying, hey, give us an RFP, give us a few location options, and we'd love to work with you to make it happen. I don't think anybody on this council, now that we have the information on what a safe parking lot is, and what type of resources they provide to a community, I don't think any of us are opposed to it. And a lot of that has to do with you and your team walking us out there, you know, introducing us to the people who are running it and showing us how they do their work, and also to my colleagues up here bringing this forward, and really just educating us, and educating me personally on something I didn't have a whole lot of knowledge on before. And I genuinely feel good about it, and I think this is a great component to our strategic plan to address homelessness, which props to my council members for working so hard on that. Thank you so much, Amanda, and thank you, Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you. I'm so excited about this. It's super cool to see, right, that there's going to be an opportunity for us to bring in a really solid partnership in the city. I agree, I like the idea that we can solicit five different locations, right, so that we have more choice, but I also am really glad that the locations are coming from the provider, because that way, you know, we can truly be a little bit more objective, and, you know, we won't have, you know, necessarily the same concerns about residents feeling like the City of Vista values them more or less because it's designated for their neighborhood, but we're gonna be able to piece together a really, really great plan using the partnerships that come from this request for proposals. And I just think it's so great, because obviously this doesn't resolve homelessness, but it will improve people's material conditions, because right now, there are people who are sleeping in their cars on residential streets, and in commercial areas, and in random places that are not secure, are not comfortable, you know, heightens anxiety, and, you know, just makes it generally harder for someone to succeed. So by improving someone's material conditions and allowing them a space where they can be safe and have all the resources that were discussed, it will provide an opportunity for economic and social mobility for people that are experiencing poverty. And that, for me, is one of my top priorities as an elected council member, is to bring forward solutions for improving people's material reality, because that's genuinely what people's struggles are. At the end of the day, you know, if you don't have reliable food, if you don't have good hygiene, you know, abilities, right, it's gonna make it that much harder for you to accomplish your goals and your greater purpose. So I'm very excited about this, I support it, I'm really grateful for everyone who, you know, helped put this together, for your help, Amanda, and for all the city staff for, you know, developing relationships with the providers such as Dreams for Change and Jewish Family Services before we're even putting this out, right? So that not only does, you know, is it gonna be out there, right, in the community, but we feel confident that there's gonna be someone who comes through that says, yes, like, we're gonna, we're gonna help make this reality for your city. So I think that we have a lot to celebrate, but I'm really looking forward to kind of the next phases and seeing how this is gonna roll out. I don't know if I had any questions, but I'm mostly just super pleased and super happy that we made it this far. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you, and yes, thank you to Councilmember Melendez for bringing this forward and for the discussion that me and my colleagues have been able to have, and thank you so much to my coworkers on staff that have taken and synthesized all the information and direction that we've provided to get to this step. I 100% believe that we should move forward with this and include these recommendations that the providers have stated. However, I have a few questions, because when we are talking about increasing, making someone's material reality better, definitely sanitation is extremely important, and while restrooms and hand washing stations are critical, another component that's really critical is other forms of hygiene, which include mobile showers, mobile laundry, and possibly even a food pantry on-site, depending on whether the provider can have that. It is my understanding that if a provider wanted to do that, we do not have an established municipal code that permits these types of additional elements that are beneficial to the individuals who are utilizing the safe parking. Today, it's probably not the correct time to have that discussion, however, since if we do extend the deadline to August 26, what I would like to do is the first meeting in August to have a discussion with the City Council to see if there's majority support for a SUP, a special use permit, which would be a long-term way for certain organizations to have a municipal code carve-out for showers, laundry, and possibly a food pantry, as well as a TUP, a temporary use permit, which would be more short-term and geared towards events. And in my communication and conversation with the city manager, he, you know, brought up a great example, which is the stand-down, right? So I think that there's a lot of opportunity for us to grow our compassion at the municipal code level and codify the ability for those who need help to receive the help that they need to have healthy hygiene, because that only promotes more community well-being and the ability for individuals who are suffering from not having stable housing, the ability for them to take a shower, to have clean clothes. It's, gas is expensive, I wouldn't be shocked if it becomes more expensive in the future, because that's, we keep pumping it out, so there's gonna be less in the future. I don't want folks who are at a safe parking, if that organization with an RFP, you know, goes through the whole process, and in the future, they're like, hey, you know what, mobile showers, laundry, food pantry, these are elements that would help. I want them to have the ability to include those in the future. So I definitely want to be able to have that discussion the first meeting in August, so that at least we can see if there's a will of a council to move forward on these things, and in the future, maybe they, you know, wouldn't be able, the timetable wouldn't work for that to be part of an RFP process, but maybe there could be an augmentation or something in the future. So outside of that, are you all looking for a motion on this, or is direction sufficient?
Direction sufficient.
All right, thank you so much.
Mayor Ritter, would you like to be heard on this?
Sure, I guess so. I have an issue, I guess I have an issue with proposing the safe parking. A lot of the people who use a safe parking aren't, we're not saying Vista residents, they're not, you know, Vista residents, and we can't actually keep it to Vista residents. And we have, we have so many numerous social service agencies in our city to help the homeless and to help people, that I, I just don't see expanding social services more. We have more social service agencies than any other city around, and I am all for helping people, up to the grace of God go I, truly. I, you know, I could be homeless another year, who knows? I won't have my council job anymore. I'm just teasing, but, but it's a serious thing, and I do feel for the homeless and want to help them, but we can't help everyone, and we can't, you know, keep taking on more and more of the things. Other cities have to help do that also. So, you know, I don't see San Marcos, you know, taking a lot on. So we have Exodus, we took that, and we have, you know, a lot of other agencies, you know, and so I'm not in support of this, plus I have experience of trying it one at a time, and I agree that probably, you know, the people doing it now, the Jewish agency does a better job at it, but I just don't know that, I don't know that the neighbors, when you say where the place is going to be, I don't know that you're gonna get support from the neighbors for it. So I, I'm just not, I'm not in support of it, so that would be my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Mayor. And seeing no other speakers, we'll move to item D4. Our final discussion item is regarding dog parks. Councilmember Green requested the item be placed on the agenda, so Councilmember Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Your name's still here, Councilmember Melendez, was this supposed to be cleared? Oh, you do, already have comments, dang! She doesn't want to hear what I gotta say, she ready. All right, so, yeah, basically what I want to do is just bring this item forward to my council members. There's a dog park on the south side of Vista, there's no dog park on the north side of Vista. Basically, what we're discussing tonight is the city-owned properties and what the potential of these city-owned properties would be to be converted to dog parks. What I really want to discuss with my council is, number one, the feasibility of these sites as dog parks. Frankly, I've looked at all these sites, and I really don't think, personally, any of these city-owned properties are conducive for a dog park that are on this list, but what I'd like to speak with my council members about is, we own this property, and property's a commodity, and every time we own property, we don't want to sell it to be developed unless we can get some type of benefit for our community. And some of the properties that we own may be more practically, you know, zoned or designed for residential use based off of where they're located, as opposed to like a park use. But what I wanted to discuss with my council is that like, hey, we need parkland, and we've made a commitment to our city to get more parkland, and we've also made a commitment to build a dog park on the north side of Vista. So as opposed to trying to shove a dog park in one of these, you know, little lots that are either already zoned for something like you say, or not conducive of a dog park, I'd like to know which lots, number one, aren't already designated for something, which obviously I can read it here on my thing, it's more for the, you know, the public for that. But also, I want to try to create a policy with the support of my council members, that in the event we sell this land, that the funds from those properties gets repurposed for parkland. And I'd also like to accomplish tonight instructing staff to not only provide us lists of city-owned properties, but go out and look at privately-owned properties and find out, we got money, we need to buy parkland. We can't keep looking at these same properties, saying, hey, we don't work, we don't have time, we can't put it anywhere, like, let's go find somewhere. And, you know, I'm not saying, hey, I want to pick a property and have somebody charge us triple because we're the city and we're buying it, but what I do want to do is say, hey, council, the properties that we own, we've already put parks where we can, not the properties we own. The properties that we have here that we can't necessarily put a dog park that would benefit the whole community, would you be okay with allocating those funds, if sold, to our Parks and Recs Fund instead of going in like a housing fund or a general fund? I want to commit our land funds to building parks, not to building houses or paying people salaries and stuff. I really think a dog park is needed on the north side of Vista. So before I hear the public comment, because I know we probably have public comment from two amazing Parks and Rec commissioners right here, I do want to make sure that they know this wasn't a move to try to circumvent the Parks and Rec Commission by any means. In the event we do come up with a decision to, you know, find land or a dog park, the second we know where it is, all of our parks go through Parks and Rec decision. What I was trying to accomplish tonight was just speaking with my council members, say, hey, are you guys okay with getting properties sold, if they're gonna sell, allocating them towards, allocating those funds towards park funds, and then really having an in-depth discussion on, hey, staff, Patrick, and, you know, planning, Joe Green's not the only person who wants a dog park on North Vista. Katie Melendez needs one, Karina Contreras needs one, John Franklin needs one, Judy Ritter needs one, and all hundred-and-some-odd-thousand residents of Vista need one. So I'm hoping that tonight, we can have the majority of the council come to a consensus that the properties before us, and I've researched them, so my feeling is, none of these are cohesive, conducive, whatever you want to say, none of these are good enough for a dog park in North Vista that we own. So my recommendation is that, and we look for properties that we don't own, what a concept, look for properties that are for sale, and buy one of those, and when we sell these, replenish our park fund with these funds. So I know that you have your presentation, before you gave your presentation, I just wanted to preface with the whole why this is on here, make sure Norm Halas and Phil Church, who I respect immensely, and thank you for being here the whole time, can't wait to hear what you guys got to say, but I want to make sure they know why I'm here. I'm not trying to build a dog park today. I don't have a location for a dog park today. I just want my staff to know, the majority of my council wants a dog park, because I can't do anything by myself, and we never get to talk, because it's a Brown Act violation, conversation today. So before you speak, speakers, let's go over your little presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. The recommendation we have this evening, as Councilmember Green stated, is to discuss the dog park locations and provide direction to staff, and in your agenda packets, I've brought up these two exhibits to help. This is the first exhibit one for cities' parks and recreation facilities that list our dog, our current location for parks. And as you said before, exhibit two, which shows our city-owned parcels, so here to answer any questions that you might have. And as you also alluded to before, Councilmember Green, there are approximately $7.8 million in the park development impact fees available. And happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna hear from our public speakers. I want to welcome up one of Vista's favorite people, one of our own park commissioners, Norm Halas. Thank you for being with us so late into the evening, Norm.
Thank you. I'm Norm Halas, but I'm just speaking to you tonight as a private citizen. I don't have Parks and Rec authorization, but I wanted to really just thank you and encourage you for what you're doing. I'm personally involved with the dog park that's south, and it's working wonderfully, both the dog parks and the off-leash park. So thank you very much for bringing that up. We have found a big increase in pets as a result of the pandemic, so points well-taken, and our off-leash park very well-used. Size does become an issue, and I just really, it's so good to be back in front of you folks again, it's been much too long, but we'll just work it all together. But I just wanted to publicly thank you for pursuing it and bringing it up, and look forward to working with Mike, we're gonna have some good times, and thank you all.
Thank you, Norm, wonderful to see you.
For the great job you're doing.
Okay, our next speaker is Jim Regenbach. Okay, our next speaker is Jim Rigenbach.
Good evening. I just wanted to say I appreciate this being on the agenda. I think it's super important, especially as density has to increase. And so we're building a lot of like small apartments and small condos just by necessity. So people have smaller areas at their home. So it's really important, I think, that we have open space for citizens to enjoy nature, get exercise, play. And dog parks fit in that, you know, for people and dogs. So super important. I do have a piece of land I would appreciate the council considering, the corner of Michigan and Vista Village Drive. At the end of 2021, the council voted to make it a parking lot. I went by there a couple of weeks ago, I didn't see any pavement yet. So if you could reconsider that, I think it'd be a perfect place for a dog park and a playground. I think it would draw people downtown. I haven't talked to any downtown business owners. I'm sure they probably want more parking, but I think a dog park would draw more people. And in my amateur opinion, there's a lot of parking downtown. So dog park, I think would be better. And, oh, even like, even if you had like, think of a dog run in some areas instead of a dog park where it's more like a swimming lane of, you know, 25 to 35 feet wide, 50 to 100 feet long, just to be able to get your dog in there, fetch back and forth for 10 minutes, let the next person in. Doesn't have to be like a full blast park. Anyway, just some thoughts, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Green, the floor is still yours.
Thank you so much, W. Mayor, and thank you guys so much for speaking. And Norm, again, so great to see you, man. And staying out, I mean, you live on the other side of town, what a commitment. Thank you so much, sir. Jim, love the idea of a dog run, a little fenced area. I think that'd be really cool. We got a lot of parks that we might be able to build something like that. And so that's something I definitely, you know, like to, you know, expand on. It's low cost and, you know, we'll talk about it. I know there's all these environmental things with runoff and waste, but, you know, that's a great idea. We do have a lot of big parks, Bringle Terrace, I mean, come on, we could make a square there somewhere. But anyways, thank you guys so much for coming. I'm really excited to hear what my council has to say as far as what they think about the lots that are here. If you guys looked at the agenda report, you do see that there's a grant application filed for a dog park and playground area behind the courthouse in District 3. And that's a 5.2 acre parcel that there's a grant application out to put a dog park over there. Again, I'm stoked that it's over there, the more dog parks, the better. But it still doesn't serve the community over here on the north side of Vista. And Councilmember Contreras and I would love to have a dog park on the north side of Vista. So whether that is something connecting to our Bringle Terrace Park, whether it's private lot or whatever, I just want to make sure that at the end of this night, as soon as possible, because it's 9:32, we can just get a consensus and give some direction to staff to come up with some good ideas. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Green. And I'm just going to be real brief and say, I've said many times, I love Mark Twain's quote, buy land, they ain't make any more of it. You know, the sooner that we act to acquire more open space and green space for future generations, the more likelihood that they're going to be able to enjoy them. So I'm a strong advocate and, you know, I urge the council, and we did make acquiring new parklands part of our city council goals. And my personal priority for the park fund is to prioritize the acquisition of parklands over and above even redevelopment of parks because our opportunity to acquire that land is now. In the future, we'll have the opportunity to focus on redevelopment of parks. But I really, as we do densify, I agree, we need more green space. It's essential to our quality of life. So thanks for bringing this item. Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Green, for talking about dog parks. I have a dog, her name is Honey. I also call her my little booger butt. And she has many other names. Her full name is Honey Brittany Lynn Spears Melendez, so I love her. So she and I were just at Breeze Hill Park this weekend. And it was like kind of unofficially a dog park there, low key. And I really, I was going to bring this up, Jim, but you brought it up first, so kudos to you. Dog runs, right? Kind of like being able to plop a designated area for dogs into our currently established parks would be really helpful because, you know, like I saw over the weekend, there was lots of, you know, pet parents with their babies and they were all on leash. And then, you know, there was a gentleman who was like, took his dog off leash and they were playing fetch or whatever. And everyone was being like pretty respectful, but it's not the correct use of the space. But we could design it so that it is the appropriate use of the space, you know what I mean? So I agree that, you know, it could be, it could be Bringle Terrace, it could be Wildwood Park, it could be Breeze Hill. There's some established parks that could use a dog run, right? Even if we also establish a larger space for a dog park. So I think that's a good kind of in-between opportunity. And then I'm also super supportive of maintaining and advancing resources for parkland and acquiring parkland. So yes, I would be in support of that as well. So you're telling me that out of all this list of city-owned properties, you don't think the Wave Water Park is a good location for a dog park? Really? Okay, that's fine. I guess we think differently about that, but. No, she loves water, that would be great, but not for everybody else, right? So I definitely think that there's, right? Even if it's not zoned or designated for a use, the public and the community will still use the space the way that they want to. So we do see in our parks, a lot of people letting their dogs off leash to romp around, playing fetch, right? You know, more than just kind of taking their dog on a contained walk. And because of that, I think that there's lots of opportunities for us to establish more dog-friendly spaces, right? It could be a dog run, you know, it could be a specific park environment where they have their own like slide and swings and everything a dog might want, right? I'm kidding, but yeah, I'm super supportive of this. I know a lot of other dog parents that would be. And I don't know the best location, but I think I'm in agreement with you that we should definitely invest our city resources into making sure that we have a dog park north of the 78. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Contreras.
Yeah, I want to thank Councilmember Green for bringing this forward. And recently I became a dog parent. I have a little puppy now. He's a Pisces, he was born March 4th. His name is Louis. And I joke that that's short for Lucifer because he's in his biting mode right now. And so the training is happening robustly. But even prior to, you know, having a dog, because it's been a while since I've had one. My last doggy, little Smokey, he was around for 17 years, bless his heart. So I'm really ecstatic to, you know, walk him around once he has all his shots and whatnot. But, you know, I totally agree with, one, any land sold, the money should go into a dedicated fund, park fund, which we already have. But two, I also don't think that we should be selling our land. That's why I brought it up with, when we were doing our council goals. I don't think that we should sell any of it. It's as important it is, as it is to acquire new land, it's critically important equally to maintain the land that we have. So I am also supportive of dog runs, I think that's important. But I do see a property here, and I'm just going to paint a picture of what it could look like. This is off East Vista Way, adjacent to the Monarch Residential Property. It's an acre, it's in District 2. From an equity standpoint, I will say that it's probably not my preferred location for a park. But we own the land and I see a ton of people utilize the conservancy trail. And a lot of those folks have little dogs. So I think it's appropriate to look at that location for a dog park. And in that dog park, you know, it will be activated. I think it will not have issues. Because, you know, when I look at some of our parks, probably the most hidden park is the other dog park off Melrose. You can't even see it until you go down. So I, you know, I don't think, I have yet to find an instance where a dog park is not activated and has issues with encampments or trash or whatever the case might be. Usually those spaces are activated to a really high extent. And I see folks from the Monarch Property walking, I know they, I guess they have a dog park in there, but it's probably not big enough because I see a ton of people leaving that residential property to walk their dogs. And, you know, a lot of them are taking them off leash. You know, Wildwood Park, we have some issues in that park every once in a while. And, you know, that could be on-leash portion. And you could, you know, park your car there and you can have a quick little trip over to where the basin was going to be built. And there's going to be a little park there called Wyvee Park. So I think it makes sense to have a dog park activate that space. And an acre is a good amount of land for a dog park. You can even, you know, have a section for little dogs. The dog that I have, I'm thinking is probably not going to grow too big. So, you know, sometimes they're afraid of the big dogs and sometimes they're not and they just want to play with the big dogs. But, you know, you can, you can get really creative. So I would advocate that we take a look at that property for a dog park and we utilize it in that manner. So, but I also think that, you know, we always should be looking at private property too to acquire. We're 19 square miles and we're getting more and more dense. So we do need access to green spaces. I think first and foremost, parks are for people, but people tend to have pets. So we want to make sure that we are providing outlets that are healthy for the owner of a pet and the pet themselves. Because the last thing you want is a dog cooped up for too long. They get a little rambunctious and sometimes a little noisy. So they need to be able to let off steam, just like, just like their human counterpart, right? So anyways, those are my ideas. I'd like to hear, yeah, from the rest of my council. Thanks.
Do you want to go first, Patrick, or would you like me to go first?
Actually, did the mayor want to chime in before everybody else got another round? Madam Mayor, did you have anything to offer?
No, I'm just kind of listening, I'm listening.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Green.
Why don't you go first, City Manager, and then I'll follow up. You look really excited.
I was just going to clarify something that we currently, as most of you know, all of you know, I should say, are in negotiations at the staff level with the property office just away, which you mentioned. So I want to make that clear until we get different direction from council, obviously, that could change. And then the other property is 444 South Santa Fe Avenue. This is the remnant property from the roundabout at that location. We are having open conversations, not active, but open conversations with developers that may be interested in that property as well. So I just wanted to, the other properties, we have uses for them, future uses. But I just want to make it clear that those two properties are properties that we have talked to different developers on.
Thank you so much, Mr. W. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. City Manager. So I've looked at all these properties as well, and I have discussed this Monarch Property and I've looked at the plot map for it. My feeling on this Monarch Property, and that's one of the reasons I kind of wanted to, you know, bring this forward, is I feel like this property would really be great to serve that complex. They do have a very small dog park in there, which actually the people who are now managing that Monarch Development aren't the same people who built it. And the way that dog park is managed and run is actually pretty horrible. So I think we would be having just those residents. And I really want this to be a dog park that's in a more, you know, cohesive location for more people to enjoy. Ideally, I would love a dog park that somehow connects to Bringle Terrace Park and the walking trails that services all of the apartments over by Vale Terrace because that's very high density, you've got a lot of kids walking from Rancho Muriro Middle School. And, you know, there's Bringle Terrace green space, but you can't bring your dog over there. So inevitably, I'd love to find property in that neck of the woods that would connect to our park. But again, you know, my suggestion is that we have staff to say, hey, these are the best locations for us because I don't want to try to fit something in somewhere to where if they're really going to give me, you know, a million dollars or 1.2 million dollars, I mean, let's sell it for more than it's worth if we have to. They need the land. And then that extra 1.2 million dollars puts our park fund from 7.5 million to 8.7 million. And then we can use that 8.7 million, or not all of it, but whatever we need, to buy more acreage in somewhere that's closer. I mean, even if we have to buy a residential thing and bulldoze a house connected to a park or something, I don't care what it is, but like, I really want staff to say, hey, you know, we can get an acre for a million bucks somewhere that's, you know, better. And I mean, my only problem with the property on the corner of Michigan and, you know, Santa Fe there and Vista Village is that it's a really high traffic area. And I wouldn't want to have a dog park right next to that busy of your road just because if your dog escapes, like, it's real like, you know, I don't know. It's a dangerous corner for a dog park per se. And most dog parks, although they are easily accessible, they're a little more off the street with a little more safety. So, and I know they, on the weekends, people do complain about not having no parking downtown when we built 100 Main and took away the dirt parking lot in downtown. You know, you would have thought that was crazy. So I know we do need more parking, so I get that. But again, like Mr. Rigenbach said, I'd like to see some pavement on there if that's what we're going to do, you know? So I know that CIPs take order and take precedent, but that definitely is a blighted, you know, bare corner when you walk into, you know, drive into the city of Vista. So for me, I'm not a fan of that particular lot. I'd like to hear the majority of my council because if it's like, hey, we don't want to put a dog park, I'd rather sell it and put that money in here, that's what we do. If the majority is like, hey, that's a great spot for a park, conversation over, let's go. But for me, I would like it to serve more of the hills and the apartments over there as well. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, thank you. It's a good discussion. So how much would it cost ballpark to purchase another acre of land somewhere and build a dog park? Do we have an idea?
Yeah, it depends, I mean, obviously it depends on the location of the land, whether it's vacant or not, whether it's got a use on it or a revenue source for the owner and what they're willing to sell it for. We did look at creating a dog park on the courthouse property for the grant and had some estimates. Obviously, we own that property, but it's five acres, so it's large and it included tot lots and things like that. But I would say somewhere in the $2 million range is probably pretty close. If you're going to, if you're going to take vacant land, you're going to have to put curb gutter sidewalk, you're going to have to do stormwater improvements, and then you're going to have to create the open space for the dog park. Probably two to three million.
Four million.
Yeah, two to three million, possibly four million. That's a lot when we already own an acre of land. And we wouldn't have to purchase it and we could just, you know, do improvements on it. So that's where I'm just like, it's like, just seems more financially sustainable to utilize a piece of property that we already have. I'm also proponent of moving forward with getting more properties. But I just think that it's a perfect location.
And if you wanted us to come back, obviously, we do research and we could estimate what dog parks would cost for other locations in other cities and give you a better estimate.
But I think, do we hear consensus the council wants staff to investigate acquiring a piece of land for this purpose and bring back a proposal to us? Mayor, did, do you have anything else to add before we move on to oral communications?
Nope, I agree that we should have a comeback. I think that, would we have to buy access to that Monarch Property? If we use that, would we have to buy access?
We would have to pay for access rights.
Access rights, okay, that's, I wondered if we would. So that, because I'm not real crazy about using that. I get, I understand what Councilmember Contreras is saying, but I'm not sure that's the right place. It's kind of be back there, we, there's a lot of, a lot of crime and homeless and issues back there when, before the Monarch was there in that area. And so I know that when you walk along the creek, sometimes there's encampments and stuff. And so, and you're along the, actually along the. stuff, and so, and you're along the, actually along the creek walk. So I, I'm not sure that's the right place. So, that's all, that's all my comments, and I'm ready to move on.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, next on our agenda is oral communications, is Carol Jeffries with us. Carol is our first public speaker, followed by Suzanne Hume, then John Bodorf.
I just, I spend a lot, I live, you know, nearby, and I spend a lot of time in downtown. I'm downtown and on Santa Fe all the time. And, you know, you've done, put a lot of time and effort into redeveloping Santa Fe, and you've, a lot of disruption for the existing businesses that were there during that time, and yet, even after all of that and the development, it, some of the areas feel like a ghost town, and that's because buildings are empty on the bottom. And, and I'm just, it's been several years now, and there's nothing in the Paseo Point, and the Ryland is practically empty. And I know there's some stuff supposed to go in there, but it just feels like the city is being used as a tax write-off for developers. I mean, it's just, it's kind of disappointing. And you build these beautiful obelisks with the little places to put flyers, and there's nary a flyer in any one of them. So it just does not feel like we're utilizing this space that we've spent so much time and effort and money on, in a way that is useful or inviting. And I really would like to see some kind of pressure applied to these landlords, whether it be a fee, or a fine, or a tax, or something, for having these buildings empty for so long, because it is just not good for our community, it's not good for our businesses. And it's, it's a lot of empty space, and it's just not, not a great look. So, that's, just been really bothering me, and I wanted to come and talk to it, it picked a great night for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Suzanne Hume, followed by John Bodorf, and then Naim Miller.
Hi, and thank you. Suzanne Hume, CleanEarthForKids.org. So, great, love to hear the purchasing of, you know, additional lands. I agree with Councilmember Contreras, you know, don't sell this land, it's important for the kids, and for the future. So fantastic, acquiring open spaces, as many of you have said, and parklands. So, let's stop the toxic pesticides in the parks. So we've come for a couple years and asked this. So we would ask for someone on the city council to pick this up and champion this. It was real easy to do in the city of Oceanside. You know, we had youth there. Granted, it wasn't 9:30, or whatever time it is now, you guys are amazing. But it's easy to do, and it's really important. It shouldn't matter your zip code, where you live. All children and everyone should be protected from toxic pesticides and chemicals. And as John will share, you know, the EU is doing this. In New York, it's not, you know, they don't have pesticides on the playgrounds, it's been state law for a long time. The city of Malibu doesn't allow their residents to use toxic pesticides at all. It was passed by the Coastal Commission, and you'd think there'd be an uproar, but people are excited to learn about strategies, so they're not poisoning their families. And we think about people living in low-income housing, right? The more people that are together, a lot of times in the HOAs and the apartment buildings, more pesticides are used, right? And they're used, oh, just in case, we'll spray this here, or spray it here, when they really don't see any ants, or cockroaches, or anything like that. And they do it as a preventative measure, instead of following an IPM, like the city of Oceanside has, and so many more. We have a ton on our website. School districts also that don't use any pesticides, anyway. So there's a lot of great strategies and things that need to happen for the children of Vista, that have already been happening for years in other cities. So, kids should be safe where they sit on the grass and do a cartwheel. We really need to think about these, and the effects, you know, on our kids, their health, their development, their learning, really important. And as someone who is poisoned by pesticides, I can tell you firsthand, and done a ton of research, we really need to think about keeping our kids safe. So please put this forward. Thanks again.
Thank you. John Bodorf, followed by Naim Miller, and followed by Youssef Miller.
Good evening, for hopefully the last time. Since we are talking about parks, as Suzanne mentioned, and green spaces, please do consider a non-toxic integrated pest management program. So there'll be no synthetic pesticides or fertilizers on city lands and property. An IPM is a policy that uses alternative methods instead of pesticides. As Suzanne mentioned, Oceanside, Carlsbad, and Encinitas have already implemented this. The EU will be stopping the use of synthetic pesticides in urban parks and green public spaces as well. Pesticides are poison, that is their purpose, that is what they are designed to do, they are designed to be toxic and lethal. Research shows exposure to synthetic pesticides are linked to things like Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, lung disease and cancer, leukemia, lymphoma, autism, blood and nerve disorders, diabetes, birth defects, miscarriages, sterility, depression, anxiety, ADD, and ADHD. So legal does not mean safe. So the best way to avoid being poisoned by pesticides is not to use them. So please direct staff to implement an IPM for city lands and property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Naim Miller, followed by Youssef Miller.
Please stop toxic pesticides in the parks and on city lands in Vista. Other cities do not use pesticides in their parks. For example, Carlsbad, Oceanside, Irvine, and many other cities do not use pesticides in their parks. Pesticides are harmful, because they can cause a lot of short-term and long-term problems. Some examples of short-term health problems include stinging eyes, rashes, blisters, blindness, nausea, and dizziness. Some examples of long-term health problems include loss of memory, anxiety, mood changes, and trouble concentrating. Pesticides can also weaken the immune system, which protects the body from diseases. Pesticides are linked to a range of serious illnesses and diseases, from lung problems to cancer. With this knowledge, please think about how these toxic pesticides could affect children who play in parks, your children who play in these parks, my future children who play in these parks. We aren't immune, especially with children having developed brains, especially kids who already have these health problems. We all have, when we all leave, we should think about the effects of these pesticides, and what they can do to not only people and children in this generation, but the people and children in the next generation, and the people and children in the generation after that. Also, I hope we can plant more trees in the city of Vista, and increase the urban tree canopy. Trees give us shade, and they help clean our air. Trees also gives us oxygen to breathe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Youssef Miller.
Youssef Miller, and equity work has been going on for many, many years, and it is my honor to sit up here and explain what equity is. And I'll just say that equity provides and ensures fairness, equality, and access to programs and, and, and areas where people who are normally marginalized are not in. So, what areas am I talking about? Let's say, for example, worship centers. We have a mosque here in Escondido, Tri-City Islamic Center. And the barriers that we face trying to open that mosque is a problem of access. And access why? If it was a church, if it was something else, probably wouldn't have had that access. But access because we're of the Islamic faith, and the Islamic tradition. We also have another mosque, we have two mosques in Vista. Teachers, here in North County, we have a small percentage of teachers of color, and it's very important for students of color to see people who look like them, especially in positions of authority, whether it's teachers, whether it's school boards, whether it's anything, counselors, or anything like that. Law enforcement. Law enforcement now has started to integrate their officers to having a lot of officers of color, and of different genders, and different identities. They've started to integrate. But we found that there is no equity in the upper echelon. And what they ensure us, not only here, not only Escondido, not only Oceanside, not only Encinitas, what they insured us is, that as these people move up in rank, then the equity will show once it gets to the rank. But that shows that equity was needed years ago to provide this access to leadership in law enforcement. Let's say, for example, elected officials, who I have the honor of standing here in front of, that equity in elected officials took a long time to get root, and for people to have access to enfranchisement in this nation. Now, if you go to the White House, no matter what your politic is, if you go to the White House, whitehouse.gov, you will see the Equity Executive Order, Section 2, and it gives a definition of equity. And I read, equity means the consistent and systematic, fair, just, and impartial treatment of individuals, including underserved groups. And we know what a lot of those underserved groups are. So if you're underserved group, you are of an underserved group, and you have one one-hundredth of something in you, and that one one-hundredth caused you to be stopped by law enforcement, or not get a job, or not get education, or denied anything, then you are part of that group. And that group should be safe, and made sure that they have access to those same things. And the last thing I'd like to say in my eight minutes, please, no pesticides, keep them out of our parks, and remember the eagle. The eagle died and went extinct because of our pesticides and the fish that they ate. We don't want to wait too long and have something else, including ourselves, to be extinct.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, do you have any comments for Council Communications?
No, I don't have anything to say tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Melendez, go to you next.
Thank you so much for everyone who's endured this meeting with us. I do want to share that a couple weeks ago, I spoke with our city manager, and I asked for us to be able to agendize a conversation, a discussion on pesticides and chemical use in our parks. So that will happen on August 9th. Okay, so I hope you all come back for that. Other than that, I hope everybody has a good and safe night. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras.
Well, tomorrow is Wednesday, but instead of doing the trash pickup at 9:00 AM, the volunteers are tired of being in the sun, so we're going to start one hour earlier. So if you want to pick up trash with us tomorrow, we meet up at Luzduran Park, but we will be there at 8:00 AM. So, other than that, I have no further comments. I look forward to our future council meetings. I want to thank everybody, from my coworkers, to my colleagues, and the public, for helping us have a really robust discussion. And please, come again, come back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Green.
Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. First of all, I would like to congratulate Vista and the children of Vista on our CEA membership. I think that's a super big deal, man. You know, ensuring that we're meeting our climate action goals is a big thing. I also wanted to go ahead and thank Council, Councilmember Contreras for bringing Pride Month to Vista. It was never in Vista before Councilman, when Councilmember Contreras brought it forward, I want to mess with you. But I also want to thank them both for their bravery coming forward, and also getting the progressive flag hung in front of our city. Regardless of your feelings on it, that flag was a sign of protection for members of our community that had been underserved and underprotected. I'm a father of four children, and it's very rare that my kids watch a council meeting. And it's very rare that when I come home, my kids are like, Dad, good job, you know? And, you know, there's a couple things that I've done over the last six years that my kids have been like, hey, man, didn't think you were going that route, thank you so much. You might be wondering why I'm wearing a bowtie and a tie-dye dress shirt, okay? My daughter and her friends were so happy that we went ahead and put the progressive flag up, that as a grand finale to Pride Month, we need to all know Joe Green and his family are allies to our LGBTQ community, and I got overwhelming positive feedback. There's obviously some negative feedback, everybody has their own opinion, but in Vista, we love our community. And if it's important to you, it's important to us. And whether I agree with it or disagree with it, my job is to represent my entire community, and this is a big thing. So I wanted to take the time to thank you guys for that, and, you know, make sure, you know, my fresh digs are to honor you guys and the work that you did in the city. Also, there are tacos still available at Philly Burdo's and Erie Burdo's, get a biddy at taco, which are amazing, or just a nice beef taco. Two things I wanted to say tonight is, I appreciate you guys showing up, because before I got elected, somebody told me that if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, all right? And if you don't show up, you're not at the table, you guarantee we're talking about you and doing stuff that affects you. So showing up tonight ensures that you're not on the menu, you're at the table discussing it. The other thing that was, you know, somebody said this to me this weekend, it really hit home, and we talk about diversity and inclusion a whole lot. And what's the difference between diversity and inclusion? And everybody says, hey, we serve a diverse population, we include diverse people. This was one of the best quotes that I heard, and I'm going to leave you with this tonight. Diversity is being invited to the party, inclusion is being asked to dance. And I want to make sure that in Vista, not only do you know that we're going to invite you to the party, but you can get up and cut a rug with us as well. We want to include you regardless of your political beliefs, your religious beliefs, who you love, we're here to represent you. So know that you come to this party in Vista, we want to invite you to dance. That's all I got, Vista, thank you so much for a great night and a great discussion.
Thank you very much, Councilman. City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Sure, thank you. Just three items tonight. One is our city contractor is going to be resurfacing roads this summer, so we'd appreciate if people looked at alternative routes and tried to avoid those areas while they're being resurfaced. You can go to cityofvista.com on the homepage, and there's a tab that'll show you where the posted schedule is. And then our fire department is reminding the public to keep your pets safe on Independence Day, which is on July 4th. And it's a, it's a scary time for pets, and it can frighten them, so make sure that you keep them indoors while the fireworks are going off, typically after about 8:30. And then, lastly, our city offices and our library will be closed on July 4th, and so that means trash will be one day delayed for residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, City Attorney.
No comment.
Thank you very much. Our city clerk?
Deputy City Clerk?
Okay, very good. Thank you to all those who serve our community and our nation. The Wave Water Park will be providing free admission for active and retired military, fire, and law enforcement officers on Monday, July 4th. Details are online at thewavewaterpark.com. The city's Independence Day celebration tickets are still on sale. You can get tickets online for parking, the Moonlight Amphitheater entry, and the barbecue dinner at thecityofvista.com/july4. The event takes place at Bringle Terrace Park. We have the best fireworks display in North County, and that is true. Hope to see you there. Thanks so much for being with us tonight. Appreciate all the members of the community that came out and participated in the meeting. We're adjourned.